Microphone check, one, two, microphone check, one, two. Mic check, one, two. Hi Phillip, can we do a quick mic check?
This is Phillip, you're Marvin Horn, mic check.
Perfect, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you perfectly.
Thank you, you're coming in loud and clear.
Okay, awesome.
Hi Veronica, do you want to do a quick mic test?
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Perfectly, thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, is that you, Rena?
Yes, it is, thank you.
You're welcome, bye.
I think that's you Jennifer, Wednesday, I didn't. That will start our Selma City Council special meeting, February 7th, 2022, exactly 5 o'clock PM per the chimes in the Selma City Council chambers. Our teleconference phone number is 1301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 849-1774-7638. Call the role please.
Councilmember Gara?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro? Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member has potential conflict of interest, may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Oral communications, at this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the special meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Anyone with anything to say right now? Well, that will move, do we have anyone online that'd like to say anything? Okay, workshop will start now, it's regarding Selma Kingsburg Fowler County Sanitation District and City of Selma Sewer Infrastructure Needs Discussion, city manager?
Yes, Ben Munoz Jr., I'm the general manager for SKF. There, and I mean, also, I was invited. For me, so I'm here to carry on that workshop today and answer the question council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz, and this meeting was really at the request of council to, we do have some relatively new council members who may not be as familiar with the operations and the relationship between Selma and the Selma Kingsburg Fowler Sanitation District. We're very grateful for Mr. Munoz's time today in anticipation of our Wednesday meeting with developers as well, just so everyone is, gets a little more clarity on the operations of SKF, the budgeting, the planning and the relationship with the city, both historical relationship, our current ongoing relationship, and really, I know there are some questions that the council has raised over the past few months that we were hoping Mr. Munoz would be able to clarify or respond or give his perspective on and really just have a collaborative discussion between the two agencies.
We have joining us on Zoom today.
Thank you, we also have Veronica Casares, who is the engineer for the SKF Sanitation District, we have Philip Romero, who's our city engineer, and I believe that is it. So, Mr. Mayor, I would hand it over to you, you know, to ask any questions of Mr. Munoz or Mr. Munoz, if you have any background that you would want to provide to the city council with regard to the district's relationship with the city and any input that you have with regard to moving forward on our growth plans and things of that nature.
Yeah, I do have some things, but uh.
Great, please go forward with your presentation.
Okay, well, one of the things, uh. I kind of work off that list. Please provide a brief overview of the. The district relationship with the cities partnership we serve. Have established. That was established 1971. Project on that. Board is made up of two advisors. There are appointed council from the city. Directors right now, and. Relationship there is that I, the board is policies center for the district, the gentleman. Director to share with the council and bring those information. That is one way, there's a channel of communication. Has the resolution. April 9, 19. 9200. High lines defining district. Resolution states now therefore the board of directors here. Pain and attachment number. Or policy for the district to meet its result. Technical assistance and coordination and planning, the wastewater infrastructure for new and future development projects in the cities. Two, to provide operator, to operate and maintain the city's wastewater facilities. And three, to maintain these facilities in compliance with the state and federal regulations governing the water quality. Discharging into them. And then, in the attachment, there's activity which identifies the city and the district activity, the first activity is planning activities, it has some bullet explanations of what the city activities are in the district activities are. And under B, construction activities, again, it has some bullet points for city activities and district activities, and then operation maintenance activities, it also has a city and district, and the last function that identifies is administrative activity to the cities and the district. So, I understand Fernando, you have this resolution?
That's correct.
Yes, so, kind of wanted to point that out. So, the relationship is that. Provides all super services, operating maintenance that. As you know, have a lot of interaction. City managers, engineers, developers, and AFCO was involved, so. So, that got us started into. Board and the collection system, such as the McCall line, we got. We pursued since the videos that they asked it, it was kind of. Extra loops to run through the state revolving fund, because we took the lead at the. Understanding what the project was going to be, so we had to do some remands, some resolutions, and it was a process of two years, I know. The city manager at that time is King Gray. Local money, which was five to six percent, the state revolving loan was. While to work with the state, because we were trying to go after the Clean Federal Act money, and we did not qualify for that, so then we had to go over to another side of the state revolving loan and do a. Had to go back and prove that area we were serving on McCall was disadvantaged committee, that was another process, but luckily, everything that, all the paperwork that was in the queue was, was able to just transfer from that department to the D Department. So, so we were able to get that done, so we also have been doing a lot of. Analysis as we did 2016 master plan on. Also hired MKN to help us carry that workload and to give us recommendations, so, so that's in a nutshell, I think, and the relationship, and again, we operate and maintain that, and also work with the city staff in future developments. When we did 2016 master plan, that information gathered by the cities, we had packed joint meetings and we had individual meetings at the time, to be able to get a good understanding where the cities are going to go, what are they planning? Hit that into our rates and make that work, and so we do have five years, this is our third year, we've been hitting the target again, and then also getting those projects in, as Fernando though, we. Your master plan is very flexible, already did some amendments, we have one that we've done three amendments on, and we finally got ourselves together to have a better agreement between us and the city of Selma on what the need for Selma is, and I think we came to a good. Decision and understanding of that, so that's been put into place. So with that, we've been doing, starting way before the McCall and moving forward, we have projects in the queue, we do a 10-year CIP that is part of that, and we have a, our model rate is a 10-year model, but we only do a five-year budget, or we look at five years of the budget, so those are a lot of things, we have tools in place, we have the sewer master plan, we have the capital improvement plan, we do the budget review every year, we do the capital improvement every year, auto rate for setting the, making sure the rates and everything is in place, so we, we have a lot of background stuff that the cities don't see. There are a lot of that with the board and also PAC, Policy Advisor Committee, that is made up of the three city managers, myself, the general manager, and the CEA of county, so those are things that will keep it active and. Able to interact with the cities, as far as my team, my engineering team, works with the city staff, with the planners and the engineers, trying to get a, 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 a understanding of what the needs are, because sometimes we'll get projects that we didn't know about and they're in the queue, and we have to gear up to get those done, because it may be in a, in a road that's being replaced, it may be a troubled area, so we got to go in there, we have done joint where we find the last minute, and then the city tells us, hey, we're going to refurbish this or redo this. Have done joint where the city takes over, we just reimburse, there's been a lot of different ways we can address those with the city.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
Just sorry to interrupt, you mentioned earlier about. City-owned assets.
Right.
And facilities, could you expand on, this question came up at our January special meeting, with regard to how it's determined whether the city owns an asset or the district owns a facility, and who is responsible for upgrading and maintaining?
Okay, yeah, I think that was one of your questions.
Oh.
Go ahead.
But can we elaborate on that, and can you tell me, do you, does this, does SKF have an actual listing somewhere that dictates and tells the city of Selma, Kingsburg Fowler, which ones are owned by SKF, which ones are owned by Selma, do you, or by Fowler, do you guys have, just like your, your master plan?
Right.
Right, so do you have that list, and is it public where the city of Selma could see, actually, I mean, since you're serving our facilities, do you guys have a list of what's owned by Selma, what's owned by SKF?
It's in the sewer master plan, that was a map we showed you with the red lines and the blue lines, that was one that.
But you guys have, but do you have it lined out, do you have it?
We don't have it lined up, but we do have it as projects that we know that need to go forward. So, I'm sorry, what was that question?
Yeah, if you could just elaborate on how it's determined whether a facility is city-owned or district-owned and how they're both maintained and upgraded when necessary?
Okay, I have a, probably hopefully a good way to explain that. For the district access is, I said, is that the plan is one, the federal state money at the time, and so that is all district asset. Then we have the quarter, we got the Golden State main line that provides service to Kingsburg, Selma, and Fowler, so at any time that a line serves more than one city, it is a district-owned asset, such as that. And for city assets, an example of that, and I know that's been questioned, is the McCall line, and that serves your McCall area, and that only serves Selma, so that is a district, a city asset, and it's. Again, all the existing collection system is city asset, and. That's, I think, is probably, hopefully that's going to help. Better understanding of that.
I have a question, so that's, that does help, Ben, thank you, how long have you been the GM?
I've been there for 12 years as GM.
12 years, ever, yeah, I know, when I got on.
Right.
You were, you were there, and you have a lot of experience, and I know you've come to the council, you know, many times, much appreciated, I have a question on the partition between district-owned and city-owned, where, where does the line get drawn when it's a lift station?
Okay, same thing.
Moves things out.
If we have some all district, which is on Manning and Merced, there's about three or four lift stations, again, the same principle, if it serves more than one city, you know, you got stuff that comes from Fowler to Kingsburg. Selma and then to Kingsburg, and so that's all the same thing, there is city pump stations that only serve your area, which may be collected on its own a bit or a certain area, and that's all city assets, and that lift station is actually a city. Lift station asset.
Okay, and is there a listing of that, like Councilman Trujillo asked earlier?
That we do have it, I have to dig that up, I think, if you could make a note of that.
That'd be helpful to have a listing of city-owned lift stations and SKF-owned lift stations.
That and the, in regards to that, in regards to that list, when you guys did your master plan, do you guys have a list of somewhere, you guys look at what lift stations, I mean, since you're servicing our service, our, our lift stations and lines, do you guys also give advice to the cities in regards to the age of the lift station, the age of the lines, since you're videotaping them, do you guys give recommendations since it's owned by the city, do you give recommendations, or have you? Since 2016, have you guys looked at all the lift stations, all the lines, and given recommendations to the city-owned property, what needs to be, or is that part of your job, or is it?
That is one of the activities, is construction, if it's a city-owned asset, but we, we collect for the placement of that, the station, so we do do that, but we do share it with the city staff, have this project done here for the reason. Also share that on an annual basis, when we start the capital improvement, Veronica sends a list to the planners, engineer, and city manager about what projects we're looking at. Projects to be done, whether it's a lift station, a city lift station, or a city line, then that's communicated to.
And if it's a lift station that's the city owns, and there's more capacity needed on that lift station, it's up to the city to do that, if it's a common lift station, right, owned by the district, then the district, it would be up to the district and in the O and M budget to upgrade that lift station, is that correct?
Normally, we just, we just refurbish and rephrase, if there, if it's a district expansion, then. Veronica, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the only replace and refers to the city lift stations, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, if, we need to do a little R and R on a pump station, can everybody hear me, good evening?
Yeah.
Definitely.
Loud and clear.
Sure can.
All right, great. If we're. Yes, so we would assess the pump stations, the city-owned pump stations, we're only responsible for the in-kind replacement, so if there's some, a little, you know, work that needs to be done, you know, say, you know, the pumps are worn out, and some of the mechanical and electrical, we would go in and replace that, you know, the same with the same, district lift stations, however, when we start working on those, it would be, you know, in a capacity upgrade, and, you know, the R and R of the existing, and I do want to make a comment on the city collection system projects, I do generate a list and send it out to all our member cities, to their city engineering departments for comment. We also discuss that in our policy advisory committees as well, and then lastly, once we have a project approved and we're moving over for construction plans, we do send those to the city engineer for any comments to come back, and we're responsible only for the, the like replacement of city-owned sewer mains, so if there's a 10-inch, we're responsible for that 10-inch or a 12-inch, and that 12-inch or a 6-inch, whatever that size is, so I hope that clarifies your questions on city-owned and district-owned.
I have a question, Veronica, I have a question, and you or someone can answer this, you guys keep referring back to the PAC, because the PAC is what, the PAC is what joins you, I remember I sat in the board with you guys.
Right.
About a year ago. I know the discussions of the PAC saying that, you know, the cities have never met, so, since 2016 or 15, Veronica, when you guys talk about, you guys have relayed this message to PAC, how many meetings have you guys had, and who has, has it been the city manager?
Yes.
Or has it been an engineer?
It's been the city manager, when it gets to that point, but there's a lot of discussion with the city engineer and the planner's part of that, but once it's going to, before it goes to the board, it goes to the policy advisor committee, and it, it, projects are presented.
The question for me is, like we asked in regards to how many lift stations, how many pipelines are owned by the city of Selma, I would like to know how many meetings you guys had since 2016 to now with the PAC and what their names are.
Okay.
Of our staff.
Pre-COVID, we were having them quarterly. Once we got COVID, then we, we have them as needed. I did the chair last month, recommend that we start looking at these quarterly again and bringing them back.
In regards, in regards to video, thank you, thank you, in regards to videotaping, do you guys, do you guys sub that out, or you guys do it yourself?
We subbed that out, and then we also subbed up the review for the videoing, that way it doesn't.
But that's the one I was asking you. You said that you hit target just about in all phases, when you said target, you hit target, what did you hit target on, is it because the videotaping, or was it the, or is it the proposed projects that are done through the, through the?
Yeah, it's the proposed projects and the revenue coming in for those projects to be paid, paid as you go. Yeah, it's the proposed projects and the revenue coming in for those projects to be paid paid as you go.
For the budget that the board.
Approved three years.
Is what you guys hit.
Has been doing, uh yes, we've been sustaining it.
When you do the capital improvement, the board, when the board does the capital improvement plan, does it do it citywide? Does it do it all three cities all combined with the income that's received? Or is it done by city in individually with the needs?
It it's done by the cities individual by the needs.
Or is that actually actually took back to the PAC and they're the ones that give you an appra- uh an evaluation or is it?
Right.
The board?
No, it has to go to the policy advisor committee before it goes to the board. So they can look at it and agree or disagree with those recommendations. And we had had where the cities had, you know, wanting to look at other things and. Back to resolve those.
And I ask this, I ask this because we're we're in a really unique position. I thank you so much for coming here. And but if PAC ha- uh the way I look at it, PAC has a strong responsibility, right? So if the engineer, which is Veronica.
Right.
Sees that meets with all the engineers and says, hey, you know what? I think that engineers are interpreting that, you know what? This is needed. They they then Veronica sends it to you, you send it to the PAC and PAC says it's okay. And then it goes to the board and the board directs.
And approves it.
So it's really important that, and and I just say this for myself, it's really important to understand who the PAC is, who's representing PAC and who's done in the past.
Yeah, it's again, the the three city managers. Myself, general manager, I'm part of the committee, and then the C E A president of county. Uh we have tried, I tried to set one up about two, three months ago, and unfortunately with everybody being busy. We cannot get all the everybody in one room. So that's the other challenge we have is. So I think if we set them up where they're more on a regular basis quarterly, then we. Get that stronger involvement from the city um and.
If I'm hearing correctly, the lift stations that are city owned. It would be up to the city to increase capacity and the lift stations that are S K F owned. It'd be up to the cities to increase capacity.
That's correct.
Right? Because all you do is keep them repaired.
Right, right, correct.
So if just. Traply, that's not what he said. He said that you don't you don't upgrade capacity on. Or for Veronica, there's no upgrade by S K F on capacity of.
Correct.
Of lift stations. So the lift stations that we're talking about, namely Clarkson and some of the two biggest ones.
Sunset.
Sunset, what role, given what Ben and Veronica have said, would S K F play in in the upgrade of capacity for those lift stations?
If I may answer that, Ben.
Sure.
Um from from what uh my interactions with Veronica and S K F have been thus far. What they have calculated for us is how big that upgrade needs to be. Um based on our growth plans and active projects within the community. So they calculate the flow rates. And how big that upgrade needs to be. And, you know, they develop a cost estimate as well that we can then give to developers and say, this is how much. Roughly, it's going to cost to upgrade that facility.
Like a planner.
Exactly. And so um. I think from the from the city's perspective or from the developer's perspective, then they take that information and then and develop the plans necessary to to conduct that. Or to install, construct that update. Um but I I did have a question. If there is um. If there is a need to upgrade a facility, like for example, a a lift station. Is there any possibility that S K F could potentially um assist with? The portion of the replacement of the facility that's not an upgrade, that's just the in kind replacement? And then either the city or the developer would pay for the difference for the upgrade? Is that ever something that's been done by S K F?
That is the way it works. Uh if it's just. If it's an upgrade with a uh I mean replacement with an upgrade, then the. The district covers the replacement portion of it. Any uh anything that's expansion, then it's a developer or whoever or the cities.
Got it. So it's just replacement is S K F through the budget of the three cities, but expansion is the city itself.
Yes, Veronica, you want to clarify that?
Well, which the developers would need to pay.
Yeah, um yeah, that is correct. There are, you know, when you're talking about Sunset and Clarkson being upgraded. There are R and R components to that. But I would just have to caution that that R and R component is the the rate that. Um for example, the city of Selma residents would pay to assist in paying for that in kind replacement of. The uh infrastructure, you know, say a lift station. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But that would be correct. McCall line, you know, that's um all rate payer funded basically. So we just have to keep that in mind as we move forward on any participation in R and R. And upgrades, or I guess a combination of R and R and upgrades.
S K F wouldn't pay any of the R and R for the two.
No, we would pay, but it's coming from the S fund, the Selma fund.
So Ben, I have a quick question. You mentioned about projects that. You guys are responsible for with all cities that, you know, put the um plan or the major plan together. But you also mentioned about projects that you don't know of. Can you elaborate in the past two years if Selma had? Um projects that S K F had to assist with and didn't know of?
Uh yeah, uh Veronica, do you want to kind of give that?
Sure. Yeah, I I I have a couple of projects that are um more recent. Um. I typically ask, and I think I I asked late this year about any um road paving projects that. Um our cities are going to be doing. And I asked that of all three cities. And, you know, I'll get a list or I won't get a list. It just depends or there's no projects planned. Um but for Selma particularly, there is a sewer main put in in uh Nebraska. That was just paved and that was really rushed. We didn't have a chance to comment on it. Um we're gonna have to uh probably parallel that line in the future once development pops more to the west. And I think with a little more planning, um we've could have gotten the right size and everything buttoned up really nicely. So that was a recent project. The other one was um in the alley.
I'm sorry, what project was that?
There was a sewer main in Nebraska between um Highland and Mitchell.
And before you go on, can I ask you a question in regards to that?
Sure.
You're stating that Selma did a project and that you guys were rushed on doing this project. Is that what you're stating?
It was it was a city um it was a city sponsored project. So you were in a rush to pave and. The um sewer main was installed.
Okay, so in regards to that, when you guys have your quarterly meeting with PAC. Do you guys not go through, and I understand that you have what's called the G F I. And a master plan for the city of Selma and understanding that the city of Selma is with S K F. Do you guys not discuss or anybody in general discuss the projects at a whole? Or do you guys just forget it and wait, you know, somebody come to you, that's when you're gonna talk?
Um, you know, that project was um it it was never discussed. We just, you know, heard from the city. We're doing this project and we, you know, got planned for it, you know, so it wasn't really in our radar. Um and I don't remember, I don't know if this was last year or the year before, but that's one project. Uh the other project was the paving of the alley between. Floral and Chestnut and McCall and Logan, I believe. Um that was an alley project that was going to be a paved um by the city. And we got noticed really late in the game. I believe you're already had bid out. The project and that's our trouble spot area, shallow sewer. And in pretty bad shape there. So we uh it wasn't in our budget. For that current year. Actually, I had it in the budget, but it was uh. I guess I don't, I'm not sure if it was moved up by the city or uh what happened, but it was kind of a year late in our C I P planning. So we had to move that up on an emergency basis to get it um paved, excuse me, get it. This new sewer line installed and then you guys came back behind this and paved the alley. So those are two more recent projects that um the rhythm is communications or lack of communications between the city and the district.
That wouldn't have been addressed during the pre-project planning that this needed to happen. Isn't there?
Um yeah, so it didn't come up on the radar when either, you know, I sent out emails to the city engineer. Um it wasn't sent back to me as a project for that year. And then also subsequently, you know, we do have our. Policy advisory committee after meetings after that and it and it didn't come up until after our budget was approved. Um so then we're uh rushing to get that sewer main um replaced there, especially out there in. Um the McCall floral area.
And that's replacement of like kind, so that's borne by.
Correct. That's that's just S Selma. Yeah, correct.
I I have.
Oh, the reason why I asked, Ben, is because I know in the past we've had this discussion and this was my first year in regards. Um to stay, you know, sitting on the board for S K F. And I I noticed that when we had our meeting and I questioned it in regards to. Why are we having projects bringing forward? You know, they should have been handled two years ago. Or should have been taken care of a few years ago. And I think this is the reason why I'm requesting for. Um S K F and Selma um city manager and, you know, ourselves or however. To sit down and have these meetings and make sure that our projects are in line with every year. Because we don't want to be, you know, backwards. I mean, we want to move forward and we don't want to get behind. And I know we mentioned another thing about rates. You know, that's another thing that we don't want to fall short.
Right.
So this is probably why we are, you know, requesting and asking these questions because, I mean, I get it, you know. Things are going to happen, but it just seems like um we just can't be getting hit with this kind of um.
Crisis.
Uh projects getting behind, you know, this is crucial to our city and and crucial for our development. And we just don't want to fall short. So but thank you anyway.
Yeah, I agree. And and I think I did inform the board of that. And it was not, it's not only Selma.
Right. Sure.
Happen we, but I think. My staff is having to scramble. Uh we also uh the thing that uh. All of this stuff should be done at my staff level with your planners and engineer. Uh they have ongoing P R C meetings. They're not having those anymore. So but I know. Office here, we had several meetings on those things. Only know what's up, what you tell us, that's all we know. I mean, we can't predict the crystal ball, but that's one of the major problem. And I think I brought those uh concerns to the board. And that's why they're recommending that we have more pack and. Try to get my engineer staff to come out here and communicate them. But, you know, again.
If I'm understanding correctly, and uh in terms of, say, subdivisions that are coming in. That need sewer upgrades, the extent of your involvement is as our kind of air sets planner. You get the plans and you look at them and you see what they're going to be doing. And that's it. So let's say, uh Amberwood. You know, is coming in and they need a lift station. You would, your role, if I'm understanding correctly. Correct me if I'm wrong, would be to get the the plans, would be to get the sewer capacity that's necessary or the upgrade on the lift station. And to to comment on that. That's a highly technical job that you're doing and something very worthwhile and something that the. Developers need in order to chart their um their future construction. How have you been in terms of you actually getting to those projects, though, in your workload? There's been some talk of, you know, it takes a while to get S K F out. It takes a little more than a while, actually. And and the question, I think, is are you fully staffed enough to be able to take care of? That that increase in development, not just with Selma, but you know, with the other client cities. But since this is a Selma City Council, we're concerned with Selma tonight.
Yeah, uh we usually put a high priority on that and I'll let Veronica follow up with her sign of that. But uh a lot of times that's the issue. This of those, we do do the the plan check, gotta go through the process, through the planning. And then we we also have to have the final planning of uh we find off on the plans. And all our concerns or questions, because I know the. Have a lot of developers. Sometimes they don't want to put in there. That creates trouble for us because once they build, it's harder to get the connection P and get all the proper uh documentation. Uh we have uh helpers that already know us. They'll come to us because they know the process. It's always the ones that there's that lack of communication between the city staff to the developer.
There an example of that?
Veronica, you want to kind of explain some of that?
Yeah, I I try to do my best. You kind of cut out there, so I didn't quite hear all your uh all your comments. Um yeah, so if we have a developer come in and um we'll we'll talk to him and say, okay, um I'll I'll take like an easy thing. You just, you know, you need to put in this ten inch from here to here downstream, we're good, and then do your interior improvement. Um they get on board with that. The plan checks go pretty quick. Um they submit the plan checks. It's when we have issues like, hey, well, can we like downsize this pipe or move this pipe over? Or take these parcels out. Um that's when I have to send that, those kind of redos on the master planning out. And that does take a little more coordination. Um and uh to do that, um you know, Ben talked about, you know, doing a couple of updates to the master plan. You know, that is correct. So whenever we have to do that, that usually takes a little bit longer because we're balancing that with other workload that's. You know, in the office. Um once the developer says um they're, once they're on board with the improvements. Um and they prepared the uh the plans, that that can, that's probably like a two week turnaround, depending on workload. We try to hit that two week mark to turn around, um plan check, and it just depends on who we get. Um you know, some um engineers we have, maybe we have to do three plan checks, you know, so that. That would be like a six week period, say, well, actually a little bit more. Our 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 time is like two weeks, for example. Um if they're uh developers really haven't or engineers haven't really worked with this, it might take a little bit longer. Um and if it's only. Um like gravity sewer main, that's also quicker. If we have a pump station, that does take longer. That probably adds a few weeks to our our plan check time because we have to coordinate with the maintenance department. And engineering and kind of do a little back and forth to make sure we get all the all their needs addressed. So um it really just depends on if we're going straight, you know, developers putting in what the master plan says. Does go quicker than later. We're actually a little bit quicker than some of our member cities when we have that down.
I have um questions, comments, concerns, like everything, all the above. Um and let me know if you can't hear me because I have to talk through this mask. But um I remember sitting here in two thousand sixteen. And and watching the the plan development and everything. And at that time, I was a recent property manager. And so it was really intriguing, right? Because when I went to the property, I said, okay, where are my sewer lines? Where are my main lines? Where are all these emergency things, right? Shut off everything. And so um I thought, oh, this is really cool, like for me to look at it on a city level, you know, because the city is more like a big property, right? It's a big, so so my concern is if we have a master plan and we know where all these lines are at and everything. And we're responsible and 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 here we are in two thousand twenty-two. And we're still not where we're supposed to be. Because back then it says we need to upgrade this, we need to upgrade this, we need to upgrade this. So I'm hearing nothing's really been done, is what I'm hearing right now. That none of this stuff has been done. I'd like to see what the maintenance schedule looks like, what the um uh the completion schedules have been. From that twenty sixteen, I understand it took a couple of years and I'm sorry if I sound a little bit. But I'm just, I'm just kind of like listening and I'm thinking, I don't hear anything that I need to hear. I just hear we're gonna do this, we did this, we, but there's, I don't see a, I don't hear a completion. I would like to see a list of the projects specifically for Selma. I would like to see um the maintenance schedules, the routine schedules, what's been done, what has been assessed, what the needs are. So that we can make the decision to say, okay, we need. So that we can make the decision to say, okay, we need to get tackle Clarkson. We need to get that one updated because we have developers that are ready to build. What do we need to do? So I would like to see something because that's not only going to help us, you know, um, assess our needs, but it's also going to assess. Um, do we need to refurbish? Do we need to, you know, put in a brand new line? Um, I, I, the vision that I get is I worked in Fireball for a little while. And I had to go in there with the plumber because I had many busted main lines, water lines. And I remember the material that they used there, right? And so he was explaining to me, he was a great, um, plumber. And, and he explained to me, and so I love to learn that stuff. I'm like, if I could be like in maintenance, if I can be, I would love that. Um, but it, it was interesting to me, right? So I can only imagine what Selma's lines look like and, and what do we need to, to get them upgraded? And so that we can, you know, move forward to that capacity and because we want to grow, you know, we're lacking in housing. We can't move forward if we don't have the proper infrastructure. So I would like to see schedules, timelines, um, goals. Like I would like to see all of that as a realistic, let me see the document. I would like to see a report or a spreadsheet or something with maps included. So that's kind of, again, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if I feel, I sound a little bit frustrated, but I just feel like I'm not hearing any of that. Like what is the solution? Like, don't tell me what the problem is, give me a solution. So that's, that's what I want to know, I want to hear.
Okay, I could uh, explain and maybe just clarify one thing. Uh, all the repair replacements that we are responsible have been happening. Such as the McCall and some other lines, I'll let Veronica kind of share those. We have a lot of projects that we've already put into, and we've done and completed and projects that are in the queue that are looking at. Funding available, priorities, risk creator and several criterias. So our part is done, okay? The second part, what you're referring is to the expansion part. That's a coordination between us and the city. Like I said, we've already had three adjustments to our master plan since we adopted in 2016. That's only going to happen as developers move forward and come forward to Amberwood. We've been talking to them for 10 years. Finally got, we went back, we visit that several times, different city managers with the developer who's we, me. Veronica and my staff spend a lot of time in working with them, trying to help them to understand the staff at the time. What it's going to take. Uh, I have 42 years experience. Uh, I worked 20 years in Didauba. And if you see the growth there, that was part of my planning. I used to do economic development and. A vision was already looked at. I have that knowledge. I try to share it. Uh, but you know, with developers, uh, once I get involved, when it gets to my level, then. Then I, I have the authority to make those proper recommendations and changes. Those are come to be after the staff reviews and go back. So I think where you're not seeing the progress is we've been talking for 10 years for the city. Is this issue, the expansion? Because when I did the sewer master plan, when I became general manager, understanding an infrastructure, that was what happened in the past. Was everything that was built in Selma's the most oldest infrastructure, everything was built as needed basis. A developer come in and we still have that. We have to, you know, get the bad name for, for telling the developer, we need you to do this all the benefit. We need to grow this, uh, the expansion infrastructure so we can maintain it and have a future benefit. And that was one thing with Amberwood. They want to know, well, how come I have to build? Why can't I just put a, a 20 inch instead of a 47 inch? Well, because we want to serve this so, so much benefit to open it up. You got reimbursements, you got things you can do to get your money back. You got 6%, but that's between the city and the developer. So I think that's where you're hearing, uh, as far as us, we've already done analysis, we got all that. That's what we do, uh, since we started, started 2016, got the McCall, which was a very challenging project. Uh, I'll let Veronica, but as far as the daily maintenance that we have to maintain, we're doing it. We're doing the, the E C T V, the, getting the troubleshoots area. Uh, Veronica's working on putting, uh, I call his community, uh, placement and repairs. You know, we can do so many, uh, linear feet a year, you know, we're working that. But we have been trying to get those priorities that we have in the sewer master plan that we were notified in 2016. Trying to get them again to.
So. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, so as, as a, from the city, what do you need from us to get to that? Where do, where do we need to be? What do we need to do to be able to bring all of that? That we need to bring to fruition? And, and I mean, yes, we need to involve the developers, but I think as a city, we need to do something. We need to, we need to take responsibility and ownership and, and figure out how to get there. Because if it's been 10 years, we cannot afford to wait another 10 years. We cannot afford to just Band-Aid everything. We cannot afford to put it on to the developers, put it on. We, I think we need to figure out how do we move forward as a city to help the developers, to help S K F, to help all the, all the, um. The, the parties involved and, and just move forward, you know? And, and I appreciate all your experience. I appreciate all your knowledge. Um, I just want to know where do we, where do we move? How do we move forward? How do we bring that to fruition?
Right.
And you know, like bring the plan and let's figure out how much is that going to cost so that we can get all of these things done.
Right, and I agree with you. That's, that's the, the game plan and I, I, uh, since I became general manager, I was aware of that. And I had a, some of you might have been here, but we had a workshop between the district board and the city council. I made plenty of recommendations back then, you know, start looking what your policy is as far as expansion, which is council. What are your priorities? Where do you want to develop? We try to say, this is what's, uh, uh. Bill, and this is what expansion. Uh, we had a sewer master done in 2006. So I bought it forward to revisit that because I seen that challenge. Like I'm, you know, do a, like your, your connection fees, do you connect? I, I haven't got an answer, yes or no on those, so. It have, uh, the, uh, meetings with developers. We answered all the questions, however, there's gaps in the city such. Those questions that you have, what the policies are, you know, you have other challenges, you know? Transportation and, uh, I think S K F is a very small part of it, except we just seem because we're, you know, part of that. But from my experience, it's quite a bit of, uh, those are the challenges with your staff. And I commend, uh, Fernando, I think he's trying to break that gap. Because we had a lot of city managers that came and gone, gone in between that time. That's the other issue that's, that wasted. I know, uh, Raina was here and a lot of the talks and, and I kept saying the same thing over and over. This is what you gotta do. And we go back to minding our own business and, and, you know, as we only know what we hear. And that's the problem. But we have been working with Fernando a lot more active and getting that. Like I said, we've got the third amendment, it's that sewer master plan is flexible, which is, that's the way we designed it. So, uh, or as far as those are the two different questions. One is what have the district done?
I think we have a council member with a question.
Ben, appreciate it. You know what, man? Um, after this meeting, you guys are doing a hell of a job. You're doing a great job. You and Veronica are blowing it out. Here's a question I have for you. I have three developers right now asking me, why can't we get answers from S K F? So aside of everything, aside of the fact that you guys are doing a great job, the city of Selma is growing and we're having, we're having growth, right? We have a new city manager. We have a new city staff. Will this, will, will, will S K F commit to give Fernando access to the G F I software, G I S software?
Yes.
Immediately?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, Veronica and I talked about it.
Will you have sent all the information that we requested in regards to the pack? I want to know who, what board, what board members? The pack, I want to know from 2016 to now, who's been meeting from, who's been the person at the city from Selma? Who's been meeting with you guys? Because from what I understand is, you know what? If the city of Selma's mayor, uh, manager has been there on asleep on the wheel, well, then we take it from there. But here's the, here's the thing, we're sitting here, you and Veronica are asking, giving us good, good answers as to what we're, what we're doing. What the city's doing, how great S K F is. But this, right now, we have developers saying they contact you and they don't get no answers. Now, I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm not saying that they're not answering the question, you're not answering the question. But the fact of the matter is, that's a developer for the city of Selma. And from what I understand now, S K F, you only service our, you service our facilities on the ones that are owned by Selma, correct? It's our job to bring an engineer and look at the lift stations and find out what the age and what it's going to take us to bring it up.
No, that's the districts.
Okay, so then we can get an engineer to talk to you guys and you guys can tell us what it looks like.
We do that, yes.
Okay, okay, so that's where we're at. That's, that's the answer we want.
I, I think to answer your question, uh, I have heard those, those discussion, those, uh, feedback. And, uh, uh, I know some of the developers that we're called the project killers, uh.
I, I don't, you know, to, to, to me, I mean, you're doing, you guys are doing a great job. You've answered everything. Sarah's doing a great job. You guys are doing a great job. What I want to do from here on forward, we're going to get the accountability and we're going to move forward.
Okay, right, right. That's, that's, that answers your question.
Okay, these are, these are great words. We've heard them over and over. And we can, you know, make political aspersions and blame mayors and city managers, or we can try to find a solution. And we've heard quite clearly from you ag- again tonight, Ben, that. S K F's, the scope of your projects in terms of these developments is review.
Right.
In terms of plan check, to let the developers know what need, needs to happen.
Correct.
And, and to come in at the end after the lines have been put in. And between those two times, it's up to the developers to work with the city.
Right.
To get that sewer line in. And if the city wants to give out favors to the developers and pay for their sewer lines, then. Well, okay, then that's, you know, up to the council to vote that through or the majority, I should say. But at the same time, you know, you've made it very clear, that's a council decision and that's a staff decision.
Right, correct.
And that's working with the developers to move forward on this. But you've made very clear what the scope of your duties are. Um, one of the things I have heard is that it is very difficult to get to S K F, to get a, to get a response. And it takes a long time. So, you know, hopefully that's what I'm going to take from this meeting is you're going to work on that. And you're going to work on decreasing that response time and increasing your responsiveness at S K F. And our board representative here can, can certainly work with S K F on that and, and bring that back. Those are, those, those are real words. Those are, that's a real situation there. So, you know, we're hopeful. We do have a development in the offing and you are a part of that development. And, you know, it's very important to work with you because, you know, you are our sewer wastewater treatment facility. So thank you for, uh, for coming tonight. It's been very educational on, on my part. Um, we're coming on six o'clock. Does council have anything else they'd like to say before we move on? Does anyone tonight here have anything to say as a parting remark? Come on up.
With Franco 1064 Mill Street. Uh, I don't know if maybe they could report to council if it's possible. I heard, uh, Ben say that S K F wasn't responsible for action. But where are we on, uh, things in the master ply, the master plan that were identified as at end of life or close to end of life? Where are we that repairing that existing stuff that services our, our current existing community? I don't know if there's a way to see how much progress has been made on those, but it'd be nice if council could get that and share it with the community.
Right.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that was mentioned. I think that's on the, on the list. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Baldev Jocelyn. Just, uh, like to say a few words. First of all. I am glad that are now actually getting to the real work. It should have done long, long time ago. A city cannot go smoothly and well-planned city unless you folks. Give the right directions. I think you are, you are at that moment right now. It should have happened a long time ago. I have a lot of good comments that you're working on and you're working on the staff. You're putting a good staff now and I commend you for that. The staff is your backbone. And when you hire the staff, you need to hire the staff, well-educated staff. They fit into, into their jobs. And it's a hierarchy. Going like this. And you as elected official. You should have a tunnel, not a tunnel on the horizon, looking for the whole community. What you want to see for the long time. You, you may be here two year, four year, 10 year, but your next generation is going to see. What their forefathers have done. I think that's what your folks should be. And like they say, everything comes from home. Whatever, whatever direction you can give to your staff and you come up with all collectively. And start the footwork, putting the plan together, process together, that's what it's going to take. There's a lot of work to be done yet. I think you got your cut, cut off already because you're, you're starting from the scratch to start planning for the future. And in that planning process, you know, you probably need help from the citizens, from the developers. Everybody you can get. And I think everybody is willing to do that. And, uh. When you do the planning, there are ways to set the process and the planning. Like C, C I P, that's one of the tools you can use. Uh, to set up your, you know, planning, give direction to the staff, they can. Look at everything what you have right now and they can make a list of that.
Mr. Jozan, thank you. We're running late. We're going to have to end it up, your comments on that. But thank you for your helpful comments. We'll have a city council meeting if you want to stay for that. You'll have another three minutes during our communication. You could, you can address this at that meeting. Thank you. Very much appreciated. With that, we will adjourn the special council meeting and take a three minute break and re-adjourn for the regular council meeting at 6:03.
Hi, Shalise, this is Raina with the city of Selma. Can you hear me okay? I want to do a quick mic test.
Uh, yes, I can hear you. Okay, can you hear me?
Uh, a little faint.
Okay.
It just looked just like.
Okay, you're coming in. I can see you perfectly, but I can't hear you. But, um, I will try to raise the volume on this side.
Okay, I'll, I'll put the headphones in, see if that helps as well.
Okay, perfect. And then I, um, have reminded the mayor, um, and our council members about our election code that says it has to start at 6:30. Or as close as possible to 6:30.
Now, will I be sharing the PowerPoint or will you be?
Um, either way, you let me know.
Uh, why don't you go ahead and do it? Uh, my screen has been flickering and I don't know if that'll come across.
I'll take care of it. No worries. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'll see you at 6:30.
Okay, thanks.
It's up to you. It's up to you.
All right, we're going to get started. We're ready? Okay, if everybody could take their seats, we're going to get started with our Selma City Council regular meeting on February seventh, twenty twenty-two in the Selma City Council chambers. It is six oh seven. We're a little late. Forgive us. Our special meeting ran a bit long earlier. Um, this is at seventeen ten Tucker Street in Selma. The webinar ID is eight four nine one seven seven four seven six three eight. When on the phone, if you wish to address council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. We are conducting this meeting consistent with A B three six one and government code sections five four nine five three. And this meeting will be held remotely. Members of the public may access the meeting using the teleconference and Zoom information I gave you earlier. Tonight's invocation will be led by Chaplain Bucky Weeks of the Adventist Medical Center, Selma.
Thank you, uh, mayor and, and council. It's a privilege to be here, uh, with, with you this evening. On behalf of Adventist Health, um, it is my honor to, to lead you in this, uh, prayer this evening. Before I pray, I want to thank you for your support of, of Adventist Health. Our frontline healthcare workers have risen to the occasion these last couple of years. And I want to express publicly my gratitude to them. I also want to thank you and the entire community for your thoughts and prayers through this very challenging pandemic. We ask for your continued prayers and encouragement as we, as we continue to address the additional challenges that COVID has created. Most of all, we want to give thanks to our heavenly father as we see and feel his presence every day. Shall, shall we pray? Please bow your heads with me. Dear heavenly father, the one to whom we look to for wisdom and guidance. It is with grateful hearts that we meet together to do the business of our beloved city of Selma. We are proud of our city and thankful to you for giving us this beautiful community to call home, to raise our families, to do business, to worship and to enjoy life and its abundance. We are grateful for our first responders and our healthcare workers as they rise to the occasion day after day, call after call, patient after patient to help us, care for us and protect us. Heavenly father, bless them and their families. Keep them safe. And may they know that they are appreciated and loved. We are grateful for our community leaders, this council, our city staff. And I ask that you be present as they convene to help bring direction to our community in twenty twenty-two and beyond. Bless their discussions and their decisions. I pray that everything we do in these chambers be in the best interest of every citizen. This is an awesome and important responsibility and for that we are here to serve and bring glory to you. May we feel and know that you are present with us. Bless each one is my prayer. In Jesus' holy name, amen.
Amen. And before we stand for the pledge, could we please have a moment of silence for Alfred Mades, deceased father of one of Selma's Public Safety Officers, Steve Mades? Would everybody bow their head, please? Thank you. And now we'll proceed with the pledge of allegiance. Hey, can we call the roll, please?
Member Guerra?
Here.
Council member Mendoza Navarro.
Here.
Council member Trujillo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temcho.
Here.
Mayor Robertson.
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. No action or discussion will be taken on any of the items raised during oral communications. Items of interest will be referred to the city manager for further review. Members of the public will please limit their remarks to three minutes. Anybody have anything to say at this time?
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Jose Ramirez. I reside here in twenty-eight sixty-three D Street. Uh, it was a really wonderful workshop that you guys had at five o'clock earlier today. Uh, and heard a lot of very interesting, uh, comments related to some challenges here in, in Selma, I'm sorry. And I would like to learn more. Uh, I am officially running for the Board of Supervisors District Four here in, uh, in Rensselaer County. And, uh, a little bit of my background, I've been a city manager for about twenty years. Uh, my calling for public service has asked me to go in this other direction. And, uh, I look forward to knowing more, uh, and from throughout the district and knowing those council members that I haven't had a pleasure to meet and, uh, and staff. And with that, uh, I know you have much more important things to tackle and congratulations to your new city manager. So, good night.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this point? Do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone? Okay. And with that, we will move on to our special presentation, which is our swearing-in ceremony of our city manager Fernando Santiano.
Ask you to please raise your right hand and respond with I'm, with I do when I'm done. Usally swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic. That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon that of which we're about to enter.
I do.
I'm going to introduce my family, starting with the littlest. Uh, we have Noah here, who's just turned four. We have Marco, who just turned seven. This is my wife Nikki and my mom Esther. Missing our oldest, uh, our teenage son, Ramon, um, who is not with us today.
Again. Dan, do you want us to stand behind you?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure, come on up to the podium. Mr. C manager, are you good with the prayer? Okay, as long as he's good with it.
Congratulations once again. We just thank the Lord for the opportunity to, to work with you and we thank you for taking on Selma. Praise the Lord. Let's pray.
Amen.
Heavenly father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we just thank you this beautiful evening. We thank you heavenly father because we know that you have appointed Fernando, heavenly father, to be here in the city of Selma to help us heavenly father grow this city community, to help us heavenly father form this community to serve you, almighty God, to honor you in everything that we do heavenly father. And we just ask you that you give Fernando the wisdom and that you give him the divine protection heavenly father every day that he travels from home, that he leaves his loved ones heavenly father, and that you take him back to his home heavenly father with the blessings heavenly father and not the stress heavenly father the work. We ask you that he leave that at home and here in, in Selma heavenly father. We just ask you in the name of Jesus Christ that you protect this family also and that you heavenly father provide all their needs. We thank you heavenly father for the opportunity once again heavenly father to have him come on board and work with our great city council and the mayor. And we just put everything in your hands, giving you all the honor and all the glory. In the name of Jesus Christ, we all say, amen. God bless you once again.
All right. And with that, we will, um, adjourn and take a, a recess for a few minutes so everybody could kind of mix and meet our new city manager and his family, if that's okay with you right here. And then we'll come back at around six twenty-seven. We, we, we have to start the public hearing on the redistricting right at six thirty to be legal. So, we definitely need to be back in about five or six minutes. Okay, with that, we'll take a quick recess.
For baby. But thank goodness, I mean, you didn't get any COVID or anything like that?
I did.
Oh, you did?
That's why.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but.
So, we just like, kind of like the flu or two days, yeah. So it was just like, kind of like the flu or two days. Yeah.
Okay, we're going to get back in session. And our city clerk's going to quote the elections code that requires that we have this next item. That we move the next public hearing item up until six thirty.
Mayor and council members, as previously mentioned to you in. That one. The public hearing is consolidated with the regular special meeting of the council. That includes other substantial substantive agenda items. The public hearing shall be begin at a fixed time regardless of its order of agenda. So basically what that just means is it's a lot of information to say the public hearing notice was stated to begin at six thirty. And we cannot have that item. That item has to be as close to six thirty as possible. And the purpose of that is the legislator added that provision so that the public would not have to sit and wait for hours for a redistricting item to be considered. So it's something that we've discussed twice already during our first two meetings that occurred August second and August sixteenth. So it's a new legislation that we have. Thank our people in attendance, both in person and online. So thank you all for adjusting to our public hearing notice time. I do show the time is six twenty five, so we have five minutes to before we can begin.
Okay, great. Maybe just let the folks in our audience know that we've already had one round of oral communications. We're going to have another round as soon as we're done with the regular agenda items. When whoever wants to be heard again can stand up and be heard during that oral communications. So that's just for clarifications, because we're doing things a little differently tonight. We're moving up the first item on the regular calendar ahead of the consent calendar. Usually, you know, we would go from, in terms of process, we would go from the potential conflicts of interest to the oral communications, to the special presentations, and then to the consent calendar, and then on to the regular agenda. But tonight, since we had the main event, a swearing in of our city manager with his family, which was amazing. Thank you for that. It's a great moment. And we moved things around. We're gonna, we're gonna get a little creative, call an audible and have the public hearing item, which is redistricting. We're going to move that up in front of the consent calendar tonight. And since it, as our city clerk quoted and said, it has to be at a certain time per the elections code. That's why we're stalling for time a bit here and we're going to make sure that we have this agenda item at six thirty. You know, I'm going to ask you, city clerk, when was the last time we discussed redistricting? Because it's been a while.
Great question. I'm glad to answer that. Then we first discussed redistricting on August second, twenty twenty one. And we followed up with a second public hearing on August sixteenth of twenty twenty one. Just saying that twenty twenty one is a little difficult. Such a, it was such a long time ago, but time has. The elections code requires us to have four public hearing meetings. So we've had two and we need to have two others per the code.
Got it. So it's been since August. It's been quite a while since we had a meeting on on redistricting. And this is twenty twenty two. So this is kind of when it gets real. We really have two more, two more meetings and then it's. The city council can approve the redistricting at the next meeting, but it does not have to. The deadline, if, correct me if I'm wrong, is after that is the third meeting?
Correct. The deadline to require, to adopt and send this information off to the county is April seventeenth, twenty twenty two.
Okay, and are we unique in this respect of cities that are getting to the redistricting at this time? Or have, I saw where Fresno County did their redistricting already and approved them at. Are we in line with the other cities and the redistricting process for the other cities?
We are absolutely in line with all the other cities. I have, I'd like to introduce at this time, Shalise Tilton. NDC is the demographer consultant that has been working with several cities up and down California. And we are very lucky to be able to coordinate our council meetings with. As NDC continues to meet with all cities, most cities in California.
Great. And with that, I'll introduce the item. It's redistricting, the third public hearing. To receive input from the community regarding proposed draft district maps, composition of district boundaries and communities of interest. And we were at six thirty. Welcome, Shalise.
Thank you. And you're absolutely right, mayor. The counties had a December fifteenth deadline. So we finished all of the counties and those few cities that also had a December fifteenth deadline because they have June elections. So Salma is right on target with the rest of the cities and along about the same timeline as most of the cities as well. All this is familiar to you, of course, because we've done this, we did this in late twenty nineteen or the maps were established. So it's pretty fresh on everyone's minds as well. So I think that Raina, you were going to start the PowerPoint for me. What you're seeing on the screen is the existing map of how those lines that were adopted. I believe it was very late in twenty nineteen. Next slide, please. And Raina had already mentioned that the law requires for public hearings, we held those in August. And actually, the law requires those before the release of draft maps. So we accomplished that and tonight is the first opportunity for the city council to review and discuss maps. And there'll be a second on March twenty first to hopefully adopt a map with that legal deadline being April seventeenth. Next slide. There are actually new rules in place since twenty nineteen, when the city went through the districting process. But they are very similar to the guidelines that were followed by the city when the city adopted its map in twenty nineteen. The federal laws have not changed equal population. There must be equal population in each of the districts. So that means six thousand one hundred and ninety-two people per, per district. It doesn't need to be exact, but there needs to be no more than ten percent difference between the least populated and the greatest populated district. We also can't draw districts in a way that would dilute the strength of our protected class groups. The California criteria is what is new. It looks familiar to you because we actually listed these same items and the city considered these items when it drafted its map in twenty nineteen. The difference is now it's mandated and the state put them in order of priority. So geographically contiguous, that's not a problem with the city, with all the maps we're seeing tonight, undivided neighborhoods. You'll see that the maps have done a good job at that as well, easily identifiable boundaries and compactness. So it, I believe that the council will be pleased in each of the map options that those mandated criteria have been met. Once we've met the mandated criteria, the federal and California laws, we can also look at things such as minimizing those voters that are shifted to different election years. So for example, if there was a district and it would be districts one and, I'm sorry, districts two and three that are anticipating voting in twenty twenty two. If some of those folks are shifted to a different election cycle, to a different district, either district one or four, then they would be delayed voting for another two years. We can also look at possibly slightly underpopulating a district if we know there's going to be growth. And of course, preserving the core of the existing districts. If they seem to be working well, the city's getting accustomed to them. And of course, if they meet the mandated criteria. Next slide. When we ran the population figures for the existing districts, how they're drawn today. Of course, every city is always looking to hope that they don't have to adjust their boundaries. But unfortunately, Salma is just out of population balance. Meaning instead of there being lesser than a ten percent difference between the greatest populated district and the least populated district, we have a twelve percent. So we saw more growth in district two than we did in, in district one. Just wanted to remind the folks that when, when the city created the district boundaries in twenty nineteen, the city had to use the twenty twenty census data. So the twenty twenty census data was used when the city drew its lines. That was a requirement. And now we have twenty twenty is why we need to adjust. And the city will be adjusting its boundaries every ten years based with every time a new census comes out. Next slide. We look at concentrations of our Latino eligible voters. And we see that actually we don't have any single high concentrated area. That we see, we see concentrations all throughout the city, maybe with the exception at the east edge. And we don't have any large geographic concentrations of our Asian American, African Americans, or Native American protected class groups. Next slide. Going to be presenting four maps tonight. Maps, the first maps, one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three were drawn by NDC. And then map one oh four was drawn by a member of the public. Next slide. Map, this is just showing your existing districts. As I mentioned, they're overpopulated by twelve point two nine overall. And I want to point out the Latino citizen voting age population. That's typically when we're looking at cities, we try to look at those to achieve fifty percent. That's not an issue in the city of Salma, because every district has over fifty percent Latino citizen voting age population. So that's, that's usually a category that is concentrated on and highlighted. But it's easily accomplished in most all of the districts. Next slide, please. The first map I want to present is, is map one oh one. Map one oh one was drawn to represent the least disruption from the current plan. And trying to eliminate those, those number of voters who were anticipating voting in, in twenty twenty two that would be deferred until twenty twenty four. But it, because district two is too large, it's, and it's surrounded. It's, it's going to, there are going to be some voter deferrals. This map represents just moderate change. In fact, the only change, the change that you'll see is in the boundary between district one and two, where the boundary moves from North Hill South. Want to point out the area along ninety-nine where districts three and four come together. You'll see that little arm down there. That's a result of the federal census redesigning the census blocks. So you can see it's along North Street, then it jots down a little bit and follows ninety-nine. What the census, federal census did this year or this last round was they consolidated some census blocks. And we must follow the census block geography when we're drawing the lines. So that will be one slight change in, that you'll see in all of the maps. This particular map meets the ten percent deviation at four point five four percent, as do all the maps that we're presenting. And it represents no council pairings. So there are no two council members are in the same district. Next slide, please. Map, map one oh two represents just a little bit different way to, to population balance. There is a little bit more change than, than we saw in map one oh one in trying to accomplish a more compact district one and district two. Just visually, actually, your map was pretty compact. But just, just to give the council some different options to consider. This does also meet the deviation at six point eight three. And of course, Latino, the highest Latino citizen voting age population district is district one at eighty-four percent. The red lines on the map indicate the existing boundaries. So the colored maps are the new proposed and the, the red lines represent what the existing were. Next slide, please. Map one oh three tries to achieve more compactness in districts two and three, and then has a more lateral district one. The deviation is six point five one percent. And again, you can see the changes with the red lines. And this particular one, I believe it uses, is it Thompson Street as, as a main divider between the two. Have I got that street right? And the next slide, please. District four was submitted by a member of the public and the map submitter. In their comments stated that it divides the city into quadrants, northwest, northeast, southwest, and southeast, and puts neighborhoods together. The deviation is three point oh four percent and it does have Latinos.
One oh three.
So there's.
It's one oh four.
There's a question from council inquiry, why, this is the first time they see that. So just to provide information, the member of the public did submit this on Friday. And in order for information. The map and then provide the information that goes along with the map to verify that the population is correct, that all the boxes are checked. That it took a day for her to do that. And so that it's, PowerPoint presentation was reviewed or was amended today. Get all that right, Shalise?
That's correct. And normally, it normally takes us at least three to four days to produce a map. Business days once it's, it's submitted. And so we were able to actually turn it around in a day, but. And we don't have the restriction we had last time that, mayor, you're probably remembering, they had to be posted seven days in advance before the council could consider it. Thankfully, the legislature recognized that we are on such compressed timeline, timeline because of the delay in the census data that they're allowing you to consider maps without the seven day posting. I know it's difficult for council, but given the tight timeframe, we went ahead and decided to go ahead and produce it and walk it on tonight. Understanding that the council and most of the public didn't get a chance likely to review it in depth because it was just posted today, just transmitted and posted today. But we did want to let the council, have the council be aware that this fourth map was submitted. And, and it does meet the legal criteria, criteria for population balancing and, and other factors as well.
Shalise, excuse me, so you're, just to summarize, because I think everybody's a little stunned. We've all reviewed our packets and didn't see this. This map was turned in at the last minute, or should I say Friday? You had a chance to review it. It was approved. There's really no waiting period as long as it's approved to get on to an agenda for the city council meeting. If I'm understanding correctly, and this one was turned in by a member of the public on Friday, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then if I'm, I'm just seeing this for the first time, but that district four, does that include two existing council members in that district?
Yes, there are two members paired in district four.
Okay, so we have two current council members that would be from district four.
That is correct.
Okay, and if council were to approve that map? And what would happen in terms of? And, uh, what would happen in terms of, of the election? The upcoming election?
Uh, let's see here. I'm just gonna, uh, see what election years, if they're the same election year. Um, actually, they would be different election years. So that the council would, um, and, and District Four, um, I'm sorry, look my notes here, District. District Four is assigned to be up in 2024. So the way the law is written is District Four will always be up in 2024. Um, the council has the ability to switch, switch around the numbering. That would be highly unusual thing to do. So likely this would, this would be assigned, uh, as District Number Four. And it would remain in the, um, election cycle. It, it could, it, you have the ability to change the numbering. I'll leave it at that.
So if I'm under, Chalise, just to cut to it, if you don't mind, um, and I don't mean to be rude, we'll, we'll all take, take a chance. But I just, you know, just want to get the import of what you're saying with this map. If the, the council person that it's up in District Four, you mentioned there are two council members from District Four. One is up in 2024, one is up in 2022. The one who's up in 2022 would be out of luck and would have to run in 2024. If they wanted to be a council member from that district. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. If you continue to name that number four. Now, if you wanted to name that, that purple map, purple area number three. And switch the other area to number four, then it would be a 2022 cycle.
Okay. Um, and then is there a current council member in District Three on this map?
No.
Okay. But there's a current council member in District One and a current council member in District Two.
Yes.
And two would be the one that's up this year. And one would be the one that's up in 2024. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just trying to get my bearings here, seeing this for the first time. Thank you.
Uh, and then the next slide. Is just a snapshot of the four slides. For your review. And then, um, the, uh, next slide. Is a snapshot of the population deviation and that citizen voting age population. So you can see how those protected class groups are spread out, um, in each of the districts, the by percentage. The next slide, uh, does discuss election sequencing. And as we mentioned, um, Districts Two and Three will be up in 2022. Districts twenty, Districts One of Four will be up in 2024. You can switch around the numbering. Um, that's typically not done, but you need to know that you can do that. So, um, after you identify a focus map, uh, map that you prefer, um, that you would want to definitely look and make sure that the numbering is as you, as you see it should be. And the next slide. And which is the last slide. Uh, so the goal tonight is to, of course, hold the public hearing, get input on the maps. Uh, it, we would like the council to identify a focus map, um, one to two focus maps. Uh, if you want to make adjustments to any of the, uh, district assignments, as I meant, now would be a time to discuss it. And then also, um, if you want any variations on the maps, um, understand that we're limited to that. As that census block geography, so it gets a little tricky, but if you want to make some adjustments, that's available too. Wanted to point out that all the maps are available on the website. Under the, um, so if you put City of Selma, CA and redistricting, you'll get to the appropriate page. And we have an interactive review map where you can zoom in on the details and see actual street names. You can even type in your street address. You can do a Google satellite image to see where the proposed lines are. You can also overlay one map on top of the other. Uh, and that, uh, Mayor concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions now or after the public hearing.
Actually, it's really appreciate your presentation and your professionalism as always. With that, we will bring it back to the council for any initial questions. Uh, but we can also, since this is a public hearing, we need to open it up to the public for questions. Does anyone have any preliminary comments they'd like to make at this time on the council?
I have, I have a question. Um, in regards to the mapping today, today it's actually just a public hearing and we can make decisions. And we have till April, what date was that? April? April 17th is the deadline, correct?
April 17th is the deadline. Um, I, I do want to mention that every city in the state that has districts is going through this process. So, um, Rena was one of the smart ones and she's reserved us to be there. Uh, but we are only going, only available on, um, March 21st. So any other meeting that you have, it would be without a demographer.
Can we get information in regards to, uh, some more information in regards to renaming districts? Or renumbering districts? Not now, but. Council meetings?
By March 24th, March 21st, is that the next meeting?
March 21st would be the target date to adopt.
Oh.
Fire?
Could we get that in? Um, what does that renumbering process consist of? Chalise, what is, is it just a council vote that's entailed or what?
Yes. So it's, it, it exactly that. So you want to, so for example, we were talking about map one oh four. And because you have two council members that are paired, you have District Three that's open. And District Four, where two council members are. So, um, you can decide to keep the same numbering as it exists where the, the people are accustomed to be. Those that generally live in the District Three area would remain in the District Three area. Those that generally live in the District Four area would remain District Four. Or you could choose to switch that numbering, which would change the election year.
I would, I would, uh, I would strongly, if we, I'm just saying, if we did go with this map, I would strongly, uh, uh, go with renumbering. Three and four. If we, I'm just saying, if we had that discussion, you know?
If we changed, if we just changed the numbers though, that really wouldn't do anything. What would, what would we actually have to do in terms of allocating? The two council members and that would want a council, would one council member then be assigned to three and then one would be assigned to four?
What, uh, no, what it would do is, if you switch the numbering for, on this map. Then in, for District Three, it'd be up in 2022. And what that would do, it, it would, um, allow both council members to run in 2022. As opposed to the 2022 council member having to be off for two years if, if they were in a, assigned to 2024 district.
They both get penalized. So the, the existing one has to run it after the second, the third year, right? And the other one has to run on the fourth year.
But correct. The option, they have the option.
Right.
So the individual that is actually representing District Three or District Three right now, that's up in two, 20, 2024, she'll keep her seat, correct?
You're correct.
Yeah, no, 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 you, you can't, that person's going to keep her seat, which would be District Three. Would be District Four now and District Three and District Two would run. So you would have District One and District Four would be sitting, stay till 2024. And, uh, District Two and actually now calling District Three would run in 2022, correct?
Correct. Nobody's, no one's, um, term is cut short.
Yeah, no one's going to be.
Okay.
So the, the 2020.
From the same district?
No, the 2024 person could, could opt to also run in 2022. Or could choose just to finish their term out till 2024.
So.
And if they, if they lose, they would stay on till 2024.
So they're unaffected. The person who has two years left is unaffected, like there was no new districts. The other one has to run again for that district.
That's where you're making it. So you can have that person have the ability if she wants to run.
And do they both then represent? The same district? Who represents District Three then? I mean, uh, District, the new District Four.
I understand what you're saying.
When does District Four run if, if you invert three and four?
District Four, District Four will always run in the 2024 cycle.
District Four is going to turn District Three.
Four would be, four would be green.
We just flip them. And the reason why you're doing that is because you want to make sure something. But it's just hypothetical.
Yeah, just.
It also does affect all those voters, right? In District.
I like to.
Yeah.
I like, I like to say a comment in regards to this redistricting. The reason why we're at here, where we're at right now is because in 2000, when we did the districting two years ago. We had an outcry over community saying that the districting maps were not lined to what they really were perspective. And we had lines going from one area to another area, from the east all the way to the west. And right now, the way I look at that map, it actually looks proper and squares. And it represents and the, the actual residents of the community to represent their, their actual, actual district. So when you start talking about, you know, ifs, ands and buts. I really want to bring you guys all back to back two years ago. We had a really long discussion in regards to why are we doing districts looking so weird? But we have a neighbor sitting across from someone else in another district. So council has a really hard and long decision to make. And I want you guys to really think hard as to how we navigate this.
If I recall correctly, we had, we were using population numbers from 2010. For the, um, for the census, we were districting, not because we were told to, but because we wanted to beat the lawsuit. Which was impending with the city. I mean, let's, let's face it. Um, we don't have any issues here. We, we really never had in terms of needing to district. And, um, the only reason that a lot of people said we needed a district was in order to just comply with the California voting election laws. And so the city did that. And if you recall, it started, right? It, it started with five districts. And then it became, um, four districts with a mayor electorate elected at large. So there was a lot of debate and we ran right up against that deadline as, as Chalise, um, knows. And we, we had a lot of maps pinned to that wall over there and it was, um, uh, a, a major debate for many reasons. And now we get this map, you know, thrown in at the last second that really nobody's, well, maybe most of us up here haven't had a chance to look at. Um, but, um, this is something that definitely I think we need to study and look at more. Um, but this is just the third of four public meetings. And we've had our questions from the council. If we don't have any more questions, we'll open up the public hearing to the public. Does anyone have any? Input they'd like to give at this time? Please come forward if you do.
Hi, Teresa Salas, 1701 Dinuba Avenue. That map is mine, um, map number one oh four. I drew a similar map two years ago, which was not voted in, obviously. Um, my, um, first of all, I want to thank the council for approving the map making tools. Though I used them and they were, once I got the hang of it, it was pretty good. Um, as you can see on my map, my differential is only 3%, which is even less than Chalise's maps were. Um, it, uh, my thinking is that people in like neighborhoods should be grouped together. Northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest. A council member should live in that neighborhood, not across town. That, that's just my thinking. And the way I have the map made out, it, it is in those quadrants. So that people who are living in those neighborhoods, who are living next door to each other. People know who their council person is. Not that they don't know you guys, because Selma is a small community. But to have a council person that I'm familiar with, that my kids grew up with, that we all went to the same schools together, that kind of thing. Um, because most of the time people buy their home and they stay in that home for generations. And so having somebody who is your next door neighbor or friend down the street running. You know who that person is. They're approachable. And they're familiar with this, the particular, um, problems or things that are going on in that particular neighborhood, rather than trying to find somebody at the north end of town, at the east end of town, rather than having that person right in their general neighborhood. That's pretty much that, you know, those are my, that's my thinking with this. There is, the way my map is drawn, there is no council person representing District Three. But District Three is up for election at this time. So then there would be a council person elected to that district. Uh, District Three and District Two would, would be the two, um, areas that are up for election during this cycle, this election cycle in 2022. Um, I don't know how that was, I, I, I had no clear understanding of how that would affect the two council people that are currently in District Four. So that would need to be remedied. Either somebody doesn't get to run for two years or somebody runs. That I don't know, but the way my map is, is drawn, District Three is up for election. And, and the way it's drawn, there is no council person at this time. So it would need to be elected at this election. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have any input they would like to give?
Uh, Louis Franco, 1064 Mill Street. Just to clarify, there still is time for the community to submit more maps. Right? We're, we're not out of, these aren't just the selection that council has to choose from. That's just what's available at this moment.
Right. That's, that's what I understand.
And what's a realistic deadline for the community to say, hey, realistically, we should get our maps in when the next two weeks, one week? Perhaps our consultant can give us a guideline to like, you know, hey, uh, we have till April, but if you really want to be considered. Uh, please submit your map by, you know, end of February or something like that. Okay, like that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Chalise, is there a particular, um, best practice? Deadline to get the, the maps in. It's not a, a firm legal deadline.
Uh, we do have to publish the maps seven days in advance before your next, before March 21st. So the, the deadline, the first of March would be ideal. The latest would be March 8th. Um, for us to realistically to get any maps published. Um, if.
Franco, you got that? Okay.
So Mar- March 8th would be the drop dead latest. And then I would want direction from the council. If, if you want us to just start posting them as they get produced. Or if you want them to come out in the council packet.
You're asking that question, you're saying, do you, does council want the maps on the website as well as in the council packet?
Well, uh,
Again.
It's, it's typically, we receive maps, we publish them, um, as a batch. And it comes out the same time in the council packet. You see all the maps at once. Um, because we're up against a timeline, one option would be is as those maps are submitted. We produce them as they're submitted and we publish them as soon as they're produced. So they would trickle in as.
And how long?
Just be out posted.
Got it. What's your lead time on the tricklers? Two days? To get them, to review them and put them in. You're saying you're busy too. So what's a realistic timeframe?
It, it, it usually takes about four days. Uh, so I was able to turn that, the, that one map around in a day, but that was, uh, luck.
When we close the public hearing, we'll discuss it. Does anyone else from the public have any, any input at this time? Do we have anybody on the phone or on Zoom? Yeah, this is about redistricting only right now. Okay. Nobody? Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing and bring the item back to the council. Um, couple of issues. The first issue is who, does council, um, want the maps to be posted as they come in after Chalise has had a chance to review them? Or hold, does she, should she hold on to the maps? And then on, right, batch them and then put them on at the same time, seven days before our March 8th meeting?
Mark, your March 21st meeting.
Our March 21st meeting. So that would mean by the 14th, you would post them.
They'd be posted by the 14th, yes.
Uh, I mean, it's good to have time to consider the maps. That would, I think, argue for putting them on as they come in at the same time. You know, in terms of inefficiency. And having them all together and giving everybody an equal shot. You know, everybody who gets the maps in from now on, it wouldn't penalize those, those people who come in a little bit later. And turn in their map a little later and all the maps are considered at, at the same time. For equity's sake, I guess it might make a little. For equity's sake, I guess it might make a little more sense to just have them posted by March, have Shalise take all of them under advisement, vet all of them and then put them all on on March 14th. Is everybody good with that? Good with that? Okay, you good? That's Montreal. Okay. All right, so there's your direction, Shalise.
Thank you. And just for clarification, I produce all the maps, even if some are, don't meet the requirements. I will still produce them and just put a notice on them saying that they're either not population balanced or not contiguous. So I don't want anyone to get the impression that we're going to be weeding out anyone's maps.
And the second topic is, we can't really make a decision tonight, even if council just really wanted a particular map, correct? Cannot make a decision until the next redistricting topic comes up. Is that correct?
You can, you can give direction on focus map, a focus map, one or two focus maps that helps the public. If they want to take that focus map and tweak it, that's very helpful, but, but it's, it's your discretion.
The council, when it, does council have a focus map?
I, I just have a quick question. As far as the, I think you mentioned this before, but does the, I want to say income limits, but I guess the income, does that make a difference in the way that these? Is that something that's taken into consideration? Like the median income, not income limits, I guess the median income in the area?
Uh, yes, if you take an opportunity to look at the, the maps that are posted on the website, each comes with a second page that has the full demographic summary. And that can be a community of interest. So that can be one factor that's looked at. It's definitely not a mandated criteria, but that's something that is, is sometimes considered. So if you see, you know, higher percentages of income over 75K in certain districts, that may be an indicator that, that particular district has done a good job at capturing a neighborhood that has higher income levels. If you see a lower percentage, for example, that would give indicator that, that, so you want to look for the outliers that, that kind of show, okay, this, this is captured, this particular interest in this particular district.
I know that was one of my concerns when I first saw the map initially, even when I ran. That was one of my concerns, that the income levels were not partially fine with each other. So I will look for that second page. Thank you.
But there's not really a lot to decide tonight. Is everybody good with moving on from here and picking this up again at the March 21st meeting? Okay.
Mayor, if I may, before we move on to the next item, if there is a map that should, like Shalise to focus on. I know during the 2019 process, you've, you asked our consultants to go back and draft something a bit different. So different from the maps that were produced and included in your council packet. So if there is something that you see in map 102 that you'd like incorporated in map 103 or vice versa, that direction can also be given to our consultants and, but allow for maybe some assistance for her to design other options. I know in 2019, we were very lucky to have, I think, eight maps that were produced by the public. We've been at this for about three weeks where I've, you know, requested to push out all this public participation, got all these emails, use our social and utilize our digital billboards that we've been so lucky to be, to have access to. Doing all these encouraging things to add the engagement, our public engagement. But if that, if you know, even using all of those tools, we only had one app. So if there are some, if there is something that you'd like app, that's also something that you can do at this time.
Council?
I think, I think any map that's been produced should be brought up on the March 8th and just let, let the public look at them all and just 21st.
Is the deadline the 8th? We're getting them in?
The deadline is the 8th, is March 8th.
The 8th, yeah.
Like, like I mentioned, if there is something that you'd like changed and you'd like NDC to produce it as maps 102, 102, 101, 102, and 103, that's also an option. I'm just, there's something, or if there's an, you know, if there's something that you guys don't want, you know, don't come to think about now and, and maybe later, that's something definitely that I can email Shalise consultant and ask her to produce some other samples.
Well, I mean, we're hearing tonight that, and I, I think people want to be fair up here on the city council. That's fair. Why not penalize one particular council member and let everybody, let the voters decide, not the maps decide who gets in and who doesn't? Okay, with that, we will move on. Thank you, Shalise. We'll see you in a month and a half, a month. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We're gonna move on, move backwards to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Would anyone like to have any items from the consent calendar removed tonight?
I'd like to remove G and K.
And I, I apologize, Mayor, members of the council. I am requesting that item G be pulled and tabled. And the reason being is we received a letter from the county today that requested us to reject all the bids. So we'll be coming back with an item to reject all the bids for the council.
So you're requesting one item to be pulled, Councilmember Gera?
Yep.
Item K?
K.
And I'm, I'm requesting item, items H and item L. You have one? Do you want to go with yours first?
Yeah, let's do, it's on the register. And page number 40, check number 78789, financial, Pacific leasing, computer upgrade lease for $11,571.98. Can I get some information on that?
Interim Director of Finance, Carlos Sanchez, would you like to answer that?
Carlos Sanchez, Interim Finance Director for the City of Selma. That's a payment that we make annually on a purchase that we did on a lease. Couldn't tell you what, how many computers were involved, but.
I know we brought, we approved this in council, but what I want to know is the ransomware protection, was that included?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
You ransom?
I can answer that, Councilmember Gera. The ransomware was part of a different contract with Datapath, our IT consultant. That is a contract that we do plan to bring back to the council soon. We just, it took a while for us to review it internally and for city, the city attorney's office to review it. There were some issues that we had with the language in the contract, but we do plan on bringing that forward. But that's not part of this item.
Okay, so that's not part of it?
Correct.
And then I have another one, this, just, I want to question this. Check number 78792 for Mona Lisa Franco, senior meals for $840. Can you elaborate on that, Mike?
I'm Mayor Robertson, New York City Council. That is part of our funding for the senior meals. We go out to restaurants, it's a catering service. So they brought in the food to the seniors there. It's the same when you see like the Rosalinda's, Rosa's Pizza. It's a special meal that we are allowed to do every so often.
Okay, but where did the food come from?
Uh, they cooked it at, I believe downtown at Max's, but she has her own catering business.
Okay, so she has her own catering business?
Yeah.
Okay, the reason I asked, Mike, is because this was brought, you know, I know I mentioned this to you and to Tracy before in the past. I've had restaurant owners ask me if they can take a turn and provide senior meals. And my understanding is that you guys were going to work that into like some kind of schedule so that everyone had the opportunity to do that. I'm just wondering, you know, Mona Lisa Franco, I know that's Louis Franco's wife. Are we giving special privileges or are we going to allow for business owners that really need the help to, you know, because we've gone through this already. And I know I've mentioned this to you before, and the business owners have asked, when can they take a turn? And a few of them have followed up with me again and said that they've never been contacted.
Yeah, a long time ago, we did the survey when we were trying to have the ongoing, that's where Tracy was involved, but it was so time consuming. That's when the senior center was closed. So now that we're open, if you have a restaurant, by all means, I'll get ahold of you and we'll make contact. We're, we have a lot of different restaurants we work with, so we'd be glad to they have to serve it, we actually will pick it up. I picked it up before and some restaurants will deliver all the meals to the center.
So with it, real quick, a point of clarification, I'm the owner of Max's Brunch House Cafe. This happened, Mike, while I was out of country. So Mona Lisa, and I want to just, full disclosure, contacted me because there's restaurants in Selma that don't have, don't rent out kitchens. And I didn't rent the kitchen out. She owns a business, it's called Upbeat Food or something like that. And I, uh, back when I was out and out of country, I approved the use of my facility. But I want to make one point clear, Mike. Since COVID, my restaurant has donated five times food to the seniors of up to 320 plates. And I have not once, never, ever gotten any paid because I can't, because I'm a city councilor. Correct, correct?
Yes.
So I want to make that point clear. My restaurant has donated to the seniors about four or five times, 380 plates, my own money, my own plates. Because I have no, I cannot receive any money. I cannot receive grants. I want to make that point of clarification. Let's make sure that we have that cleared. My restaurant is not, my restaurant in no way, shape, or form is profiting from anything that comes out of that restaurant, but it's for the seniors. It's never has, never will, and I donate every penny. I want to make that point clear to you. Thank you.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question then? But the 840 was not donated. So the person who did the, whoever the person was who did this catering and prepared this food in the heart of the city, $840 to prepare those meals and deliver to the city, which you serve to the seniors, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It'll be like when you see my Visa, you'll see Sal's, Rosalinda's, Rosa's Pizza. Denny's, you'll see Denny's, I think Denny's is on the report. It's the same, we made sure there was no connection. But yes, she did use the restaurant, but there was no connection financially.
I mean, normally the checks are made out to the business. This is made out to someone personal.
Correct. I guess that's just the name of the business, but the funding went to her as a name. She has a catering business though.
Yeah, but do you understand why we're questioning?
Yeah, I know, when, I wanted to make sure, we knew.
Yeah.
We double checked to make sure there was no connection and no financial gain.
Going forward, we'll make sure that the checks are made out to the business names.
I mean, that's just much more appropriate instead of an individual.
And if you, by all means, if you have a restaurant, please.
Yeah, I, I have several.
Yes, we want to make sure we get it wrong.
Yep, thank you.
Couple, Lizzano Smith. The bills for November are a lot higher than December. Is that just because there was less activity in December? The holiday, got it, okay. Thank you for that. Okay, James Phillips. That is solely that $9,450 solely for the ethics conduct violations or issues that he's investigating? Or is he doing other investigative work for the city?
That is the only thing that we have Mr. Phillips contracted for.
Paul Jacobs Construction, 2643 B Street, 78720, check number, it's for 1,582. Was that, was that to board up or?
That was a board up of that property, correct?
Yeah, almost done. And Yamabi and Horn Engineering, we saw our city engineer tonight during our five o'clock meeting. Very nice, he, he sat in for that. This is for the general GIS, the information system, 42,000. That's, was that funded by a grant or is that general fund?
That description is incorrect. That bill was for general engineering services, of which GIS was part of that, of that invoice.
I thought that came before that. We've had that for a while now.
Well, yeah, and we've been having discussions with Yamabi and Horn about launching our own GIS with the grant funding that you're referring to.
And not to backtrack or get off the agenda item, but someone, someone referenced, Councilmember Trahil referenced the GIS being necessary to use SKFs. How does theirs differ from the city's?
So currently, they use their own licenses. Yamabi and Horn uses their own licenses to create maps. If we request a map of, you know, different infrastructure around town, what we're going to be doing with our own GIS or with SKFs is being able to log in ourselves and look at real time where the infrastructure is located. We're going to be able to maintain our own, what they call shape files. And so it'll be accessible by staff and publicly available to our citizens.
Thank you for that. Does anyone else have any other checked register items they would like to bring up at this time?
I, I do have one actually, 78842. On, and that was just a question that I had asked earlier.
Mr. Sanchez, would you like to explain the 2015 refi bond? I know that's something that you've looked at in the past and that, the expense for that item.
What was that number again?
78842.
Major number, I guess I better go by.
Forty-one.
Forty-one?
Bottom of the unregistered.
So the 2015 refi bond, this has to do with where number of bond issues that were made by the city have a savings, because of those bonds were previously issued or rates of interest. And as the bond gets older, I'm at six, seven years. Started out at a two and a half percent, say, interest rate. And what happens is we consolidate those bonds at that level. And in this case, came up with one issue instead of hiring. Purpose of those bonds, of course, were
the bond, and so I was, you know, we've been talking a lot about bonds, so I was just very
Thank you for that. With that, we'll move on to item H, which is a Fresno cog call for projects for congestion mitigation and air quality improvement program and surface transportation block grant targeted performance program applications. So a lot of, big, a lot of words to, to describe road projects, which are really amazing and really helpful. And I, and I'll tell you, over the years, people have really been appreciative of having the roads paved in Selma. And I see this is, this is the core right here. This is the source of, of that funding. Did have a question for the CMAC funding. What is the timetable for being able to use that? And I congratulate both of you on your inventiveness coming up, saying that, you know, this, you can apply for CMAC money because it's particulate matter in the environment. And so it's related to air quality, not just paving, which doesn't appear to be eligible for CMAC funding. What's the timeline for being able to get to the rest of the alleys? Because there are a lot of folks that really appreciated getting their alleys paved. And I think that's something that we should do in, in Selma. It's really, it's very beneficial to citizens.
Well, and if I can, if I may clarify, you're asking what the timeline is to use these funds or to generate more funds for future improvements to the alleys?
Funds if they're allocated. And it seemed like it was pretty much a slam dunk to allocate And it seemed like it was pretty much a slam dunk to allocate the C Mac funds, you just have to request them?
It is, it's actually money that we have now, um, that we, that's available to us to use. It's just we have to let the cog know how we're going to use it, um, by a certain date, which is later this month. And so these, these are the projects that we determined, uh, would be most feasible for us to get done with the money, the C Mac money we have now. So after we declare, uh, these projects, um, and propose it to cog, then I don't think there is a timeline for performance. But if that, is that correct, Philip?
Um, there is a timeline, um, on the application. Um, you can go up to year twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you.
So is this kind of a sheet of music that's going to be followed to pave the alleys with C Mac funds? And how do you decide which alley gets paved first?
We've, we discussed that, Philip, did you want to take that question or did you want me to answer that?
Sure, I can, I can try to explain. The things with the alleys, um, we did, they had an application for the two-year cycle for C Mac for the alleys. The problem is they do not allow C Mac funding for any alleys that have any existing pavement. So if they've been previously paved, that is not considered a C Mac eligible project. If it's just dirt or gravel, then you can use C Mac funds. So there are some alleys there that have some pavement in there that there, they kicked out on our last application. So we're going to remove those for these T, the, the targeted projects. And we're going to try to do as many alleys as we can with this, this funding. C Mac is a great funding for alleys, but they have to be dirt or slightly gravelled alleys.
It's good to know.
And we've been working with Public Works, Shane, um, to, uh, pick out the actual alleys, um, that are still remaining. So we'll, we'll continue to use that funding as, as long as it's there.
Great, appreciate that. Thank you for that, that clarification. We have a citizen that contacted me on this and it's his birthday tonight. So he wanted to see if he was going to get his alley paved and hopefully we'll have to see. We'll have to ask him that question if it, if there was any pavement there before. But happy birthday, Jerry, and thanks for your, your question. Thank you. Did council have any other comments on this particular topic? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the last consent item pulled from the calendar, and that is item L, which is the resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU between the city of Salma and the Boys and Girls Club regarding city funding. Did we already approve this as a council?
That's correct. The allocation of the funding was approved. However, council requested both the Boys and Girls Club and the Legacy Youth Center, who was also approved for funding in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, uh, to enter into an MOU. It took a while for staff to draft the MOU. And, uh, Boys and Girls Club has reviewed it and submitted their, their MOU with the attached application. But you're correct, the, the council has already approved the release of this fund, of these funds pending the MOU adoption.
And we'll be seeing this for the Legacy Youth Center when they get their MOU filled out and completed and returned?
Yes, uh, with the Legacy Youth Center, the MOU has been approved, except, um, that they were going to revise their budget allocation. They're not increasing the amount that they're, um, requesting. My understanding is that they were going to, um, change certain items that, that, um, the budget was going to be allocated for.
Clarifying, thank you. Anybody else have any questions at this point? Okay, with that, we will, I'll ask for an approval of items. Actually, we didn't have a vote on any of them, so items, uh, A through L, is there a motion to approve?
Except for G, Mayor.
Except for G, which has been pulled until further notice by the city manager.
I'll make a motion to approve, except.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, okay, back to the regular agenda. Considering adoption of a resolution approving side letter agreements with the policeman management employees and the International Association of Firefighters, Local thirty-seven sixteen, and approving the master salary schedule, reflecting changes in job classifications and pay rates.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, the resolution before you today would approve two, uh, MOU side letter agreements, impacting, um, two different job classifications and the pay rates that correspond with those classifications. Um, and then, of course, it would update the master salary schedule to reflect the, the changes that were, uh, entered into with, with bargaining units. Um, specifically, the two classifications are creating the job classification of supervising, uh, safety dispatcher. And that classification would go into the police mid-management bargaining unit. Um, and then the other, uh, action would, would be with the International Association of Firefighters, which would be adjusting, um, the hourly rate, um, and bringing, bringing the hourly rate for the classification uh, of, um, non-safety EMT job classifications to fifteen dollars an hour to comply with the state minimum hourly rate. Answer any questions you might have?
Does council have any questions for Deputy City Manager Jimenez? Anyone attending the meeting tonight have any questions on this agenda item? Do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone? If that, we'll bring it back to council. Is there any discussion to be had on this item at this time?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
With, with a second, I just want to put my input, brief, very brief input. So on, as far as I'm understanding, it's just a reclassification of the dispatcher to the supervisor, right? And then the other one is a statutorily required increase in wage to minimum wage. You have to do it anyway, right? I mean, there's no way around that. So, um, so this item doesn't have anything to do with all of the additional items that'll be coming to council. Is that correct? The additional jobs and job titles that'll be coming back to council in a fut, at a future meeting?
That's correct, they're separate from those.
Got it. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Item four, consider extending the state of enforcement regarding the removal of an illegal on-premises advertising display at sixteen thirty, Second Street. Report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you might recall, on September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, uh, the Salma City Council voted to declare uh, the sign at sixteen thirty, Second Street a public nuisance. Um, subsequently, the council had a public hearing, um, to hear any objections to the, uh, city moving forward with the abatement of the sign. And, um, we didn't receive any objections at that public hearing. And the resolution was adopted to move forward with, with the city's abatement. However, the council decided to, uh, give the property owner an additional ninety days, um, to, um, demonstrate progress on his project, on his planned project at the site. Since, uh, the November first meeting, um, the applicant has paid the application fees. We don't have a completed application as of the, the last time I checked with the planning department, um, late last week. They've been going back and forth with Mr. Mendrin to try to get a completed application so that we can actually move the project forward. And, uh, as I understand it, um, that has not happened. There has been some communication between city staff, the property owner and their engineer. However, uh, you know, no additional progress has been made at this time. And so the, uh, staff is, uh, requesting direction from council whether to extend the state of enforcement of the resolution or to move forward with the city's abatement of the sign.
Clarification, if, if the city votes to move forward with the abatement, how long will it take to do the abatement?
That's a question, I, I think we would have to go out to bid, um, and Shane, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, there aren't that many contractors in the area that, that can do this type of work. We'd go out to bid and then, um, bring that bid back to council for approval. And then, um, my understanding, the last time we asked for a quote is about thirty thousand dollars. That amount would, um, be placed as a lien on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, can I give my input? This is.
Mr. Mendrin, Mr. Mendrin is on the line, yes. Hi, Mr. Mendrin, yes, we'd love to hear from you.
Yes, I, I, we are moving forward, we're working with getting everything, uh, finalized with the Sequa Consultants to submit. And, you know, if he looks at my application, it says utilizing those existing two of the poles on that, on that unit, on that property.
How much time would you need, Mr. Mendrin, to, um, complete your study?
Probably, uh, sixty days.
Anybody from the public have any input on this item at this time? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to council. Is council good with giving this property owner another sixty days? And bringing this back? So would we continue this for sixty days?
Yes, it, continue it to a date certain for them to bring back.
And it's not a public hearing, can we just add it as new business to the?
You can.
Future counseling?
You can.
Just need consensus?
Yes.
Is everybody good with that? Okay, good with that. Okay, Mr. Mendrin, sixty days or less, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just waiting on some traffic consultants and the archaeologists.
Okay, thank you, thanks for your participation.
Thank you, council.
Good evening. And then, uh, with that, we'll come back and bring it back to departmental reports, City Manager Santian.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I am very happy to announce that we have brought on board, um, a new deputy city manager. His name is Rob Terry, and, uh, I would like to give him an opportunity to, uh, address the council, um, if you so choose, Mr. Mayor.
Love to hear from you.
Evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Rob Terry, uh, serving as your new deputy city manager overseeing development services. I'm very excited to be standing before you tonight. As I was here earlier for the special meeting, a lot of the conversations that were taking place there, I couldn't help but think that that's going to be an area where I feel that I will be very effective for this community. My wife jokingly refers to me as a dog with a bone oftentimes. I, I, I think where, where I really bring value to items is in my efforts to communicate, to communicate consistently and to find solutions to problems, to not talk about what the problems are. I mean, I'll clearly identify them, but not just talk about them and then try to point out what someone else can do. But find out exactly what we need to do, what we can do and what we're going to do, and then move forward. Um, and so just really, really excited and humbled for this opportunity to be here before you. Um, this is a, a region that I love. I've had the opportunity to work, um, for many years at the Fresno Council of Governments. And so had a lot of dealings with Salma during my years at that time. Um, the previous, uh, five years, I've been with the city of Reedley as the Community Development Director. So have a lot of, uh, experience and background, um, not only educationally, but professionally with land use, Sequo and all the fun things that California loves to bring to complicate everything that we're trying to do here. But, uh, just very again, humbled and excited to be here. And, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity and, uh, for the chance to work with this great new city manager. Thank you so much.
Good to have you.
Worked with Rob at cog for, for many years and admired your professionalism very much. And, uh, you two are going to pack a really great one-two punch. Thank you for coming on board. We look forward to seeing you in the future and every, all your talents you bring to, to, to the team. Okay, is that the, your report?
Just another quick update, um, just a reminder to the community, um, on, uh, Wednesday, uh, two days from now, on the ninth, we will have a special meeting, the city council will hold a special meeting to discuss infrastructure in Rockwell Pond Park. Um, so just wanted to put that on everyone's radar, thank you.
And that's going to start at five PM?
Thank you, five PM.
Okay, um, city attorney?
Nothing to report, Mayor and council, thank you.
Um, deputy city manager Jimenez? Public Works Shane Farrell? Or Fire Chief Peterson? Police Commander Garza?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, members of the city council. I'd like to first start out, um, by thanking the men and women of the police department. Past thirty days have been pretty rough just because of the surge uptick in, uh, in COVID. But I will tell you that everybody's pulled together and, um, has volunteered for shifts just because different officers out. Um, so I'm really proud of the police department for stepping up for each other. And, um, that's, uh, that's your, your public safety officers. Um, so I'm really proud of them. I'll start with personnel and then I'll go into, uh, to some uptick in crime recently. Um, we, we have a, a safety dispatcher who will start her orientation on Monday, February fourteenth. So we're very excited. She comes with a, uh, a, a background in communications. So we're, we're very fortunate to have this individual start with this on, uh, on Monday. And then also, uh, we have a community service officer who just started her background today. Um, so I'll give you more information about her as we get closer and hopefully everything works out, which I think it will. That individual does work at another agency, so, um, we'll be more than happy to take people from other agencies because they take them from us. But, uh, but I will share more information in the near future. And then, um, just to kind of highlight, uh, we did have a shooting, um, on February fourth in the evening, over, uh, near the high school that was gang related. Uh, detectives are still working that case. Um, and then yesterday, or last night, uh, we did have a, um, a stabbing in the, uh, give you a kind of a general location in the area of a Plural and McCall. Did have a subject, uh, who was, who was stabbed, stable conditioning, non-life threatening, uh, injuries. Um, I am, I, I am happy to report that the suspect involved in that investigation has been identified and is currently in custody at Fresno County Jail. So, um, that's pretty much all, uh, I have at this time. Does the council have any questions?
Well, I know, um, we all want to get home and we all love it, you know, as soon as possible, but really important in public safety. And I do miss those days when we would get the, uh, the reports on the apprehensions and how you're keeping us safe as a PD. But I understand that that's for the police chief to provide, and you're our police commander. And I look forward in the future to having a full-time police chief back at the helm of our police department. And that's not saying you, you've done an incredible job, police commander, and we thank you for everything. Thank you. Okay, and I omitted, uh, Mr. Carlos Sanchez in the finance, did you have anything to report, sir? Thank you for that, that was a good announcement. And then, uh, Recreation, uh, Parks and Community Services Director Mike Kirschner.
Real quick, uh, Commander Garza saved me. I, I did want to publicly thank American Legion Post twelve. We had a, a set of monkey bars that broke a couple of weekends ago. And the next day, they donated twenty-five hundred dollars, so a thousand of that will go towards replacement. And we'll, we keep it additional for a new playground, Crone and Brennlinger Park. Also want to thank Cool Air, Cool Air Specialty, we had HVAC go out to senior center and Public Works went through some bids, and then Ben from Cool Air Specialty just called and says, uh, we'll donate the sixty-seven hundred for labor and unit to the seniors there. So we're going to be recognizing them.
Very nice.
Seers are very happy, this is, imagine the last couple of weeks been very cold. And then thanks to State Parks, they did, uh, approve our per capita funding. So we will be working on new playground, Crone and Brennlinger, uh, shade covering for the Peter Ringel Playground. And then some fiber, we need to replace some fiber at the Schaefer Playground just to keep it safe and liability issue down. But we will publicly thank them again in the pictures, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to council reports, Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
The Gateway Villas Open House over in Carmen, it's located off of the one eighty and Siskiyou. That's the way you pronounce it. Um, I was invited, and I think most of you guys were invited as well, from the county of Fresno. Home funds, um, staff, and I work really close with Yvette. Um, and I cannot pronounce her name, but Yvette Q from that, um, department. I work really, really close, so it was actually a really good, um, opportunity to go see, uh, the work other than housing authority work. And so it was a private developer that, um, partnered up with the city to build that facility. And a lot of the comments that I heard, and actually when I looked at it, it actually looks like condos. It, it, it's a beautiful, um, facility. And one of the things that, um, uh, you guys missed out on is, uh, they put on a little, a, a small affordable housing workshop just basically to talk about what affordable housing is and what it's not. And what it looks like today and what it looked like, you know, previously. Um, I was the only one that was able to stick around, so I had a one-on-one with them, which, uh, it was good to see from a different perspective. I'm normally the compliance person to make sure, um, but I was able to see from the development side what's needed, what needs to be done. And then, um, also had a one-on-one with the developer, which I did forward the information over, so I believe he will be joining us. And then also had a one-on-one with the developer, which I did forward the information over, so I believe he will be joining us on Wednesday. I also attended, oh, one of the things I wanted to mention to our new city deputy manager. One thing that Yvette did comment on is that Reedley is really happening right now, that they had a lot of permits, permits in the works. And so she says that Little City's really, you know, working it, and they're really getting together, and they're, you know, have a lot of things happening. You guys need to get together and find out what's going on, not knowing that you were coming from the city of Reedley, so I'm really excited to see what you have to bring, because I know that you, you have a lot to bring to the, to our community, so welcome. And I also attended the Knights of Columbus Annual Ladies Night Valentine's Dinner. They host that every year. They didn't host it last year because of COVID, but, and this year was a small event. So they invite the, the Salma Catholic Women's Club and then a few other people, so it was nice to see everybody. I also attended the praise and worship event that they had with the, the Church of Salma United over at Holy Life Church. And, and then today through my work, you know, I have a lot of great opportunities to sit in different committees, different, you know, things. And one of the things, and I really miss not being able to attend the homeless coalition meetings. I really want to attend, but it just conflicts. But they are starting the point and count, point and time count again. Basically, what that is, is an event that they do every year that they work with HUD, and they, they count all the homeless people. They weren't able to do the count last year for the actual unsheltered individuals. They were only able to count the sheltered. And, you know, we talk about homeless issues here in, in, in Salma, and, you know, some of them did go down, but in the state of California, and this is just the sheltered counted, in the whole state of California, as of last year was thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ten sheltered individuals, homeless individuals. And sheltered means they're either in like a emergency housing type of facility or a transitional housing. They are, like I said, doing the event, and they're going to be counting the sheltered and unsheltered. Usually they ask for volunteers, but this year, because we're still going through COVID, there are only certain agencies that are able to participate, but they're doing them on February twenty-third and February, through February twenty-fifth. So that's just kind of a, it's, it's interesting to see the numbers, because I'm in the Fresno Madera, Fresno Madera area, the counties, in twenty-twenty, there was nine hundred and sixty ninety-nine, and in twenty-nineteen, there was four hundred and thirty-nine. So the amounts have doubled in the last couple of years, so I know that there's a lot of homeless, and we have our issues here. And then one other thing, and I'm not trying to invite anybody from city staff to go, but the Housing Authority does have two opportunities for employment, and they're looking for a community coordinator for Orange Cove. It's basically a, like a assistant property manager, onsite property manager for Orange Cove, and also a resident coordinator, and then there's a couple of other positions that are beginning coming up. So if you know of anybody that needs a job, look at the Fresno Housing Authority website, but nobody in the city. There. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Trujillo?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome Rob. Rob, welcome to City of Salma. Thank you. I'm sure we're going to do great things. The next is, thanks staff for the SKF meeting was great, was really good, so I thank you for that. Participated on the, on, on January thirty-first, I participated in the Southeast Regional Solid Waste Commission meeting, and one of the things I want to report back is that we approved to suspend the future, the future annual supplement payment from Sir, and I did a dumb question and asked them, who's Sir? That's the Southeast Regional. Us, that's me, us. So, and you learn, right? So I just wanted to report that, and lastly, I, I got contacted by a resident and was really asking me if I could come back to the council and talk, and I kind of thought of what she was asking, and it was in regards to the flag policy, and I'd like for staff to go back and review what the discussion was prior to the flag policy, I call it fiasco. So I think they, a lot of people asked for discussion, so we could go have staff go back and review and bring it back to the council, because it sure is coming, and they're asking for it, so I'd love for that information. Other than that, thank you, guys. Thanks to all staff. Thank everybody, and we need to stay healthy. Thank you.
You. Councilmember Gara?
Okay. First, I'd like to say is also welcome, Rob. I'm excited, and I'm really excited. I love that dual team. You know, I think you're going to do some good things here in Salma, and we're really excited. So welcome. And then also, I just want to say, along with my family, we were, it was a privilege and honor to serve the Christian Cafe folks. We did it in honor of my father and my brother. And it was very humbling. We served individuals, and now we're part of the Christian Cafe team. We'll be able to serve four meals per calendar year. So that was a great event. It's something that we were going to sponsor and continue to do for them. Also, I attended the Knights of Columbus Valentine's Dinner. I was invited along with my husband, so that was a really nice event. And then I had a meeting with the developer, Tim Jones, Nick Bruno, our city manager, and along with Councilmember Trujillo, which was a very, very interesting meeting, and I'm looking forward to Wednesday for our meeting with the developers to move our city forward. So that was something that we have something to look forward to. And then also, I just want to mention, again, thank you to all the staff and you know, everyone that has done such an outstanding job, especially our police force and our department that have, you know, been with individuals that had COVID and short staff, but thank you for everything you guys do. And oh, and have a nice fourth, what do you call Valentine's Day is coming up, and I hope everyone has a great Valentine's. Thank you.
Mayor Protemcho?
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, welcome, Rob, for joining our team. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for the hard work. This is a brand new year, and we already went through January just like that, so it's going to go fast, okay? What I attended was last week, I attended the thirty-fourth Blossom Trail opening, and that was the first time. It was really interesting. There was a lot of dignitaries from all the different cities that was there, Reedley, Sanger, Kingsburg, Fowler, us, and then I think, is it, Rosy in there here? Yeah, I think so. So basically, what it is, is there's, this is a blossom trail that's been established, and what it is, is if you go, you can run it, it's like sixty miles. So, you know, there's a map out. An American running, yes. So basically, you know, it's all the blossom, you know, of all the trees, so it's lined up, and then there's a map, and they're updating it, and hopefully, once it's updated, we'll be able to have it at the chamber office. And it's just, you know, the trees, of course, when it's blossoming, it's just beautiful. Okay. And then, next year's host is the city of Reedley. Salma does, you know, will be hosting it, it'll be two thousand twenty-six. So when it comes around, that'll be our, yeah, it'll be our time, we'll be hosting it, and then all the people will be coming here, so we'll have a little time. So, okay, and that was really, I, I enjoyed that a lot. See, my Lions Club also did the Christian Cafe, and and as I say, it feels really good. Our club would do it, of course, we gave them Chinese food. They kind of like that, so it was good, easy. See, another advertising, February twenty-fifth, the chambers having their crab feed. If you guys wanted to go, please contact the chamber office. Chinese New Year, I keep saying it, because we don't just celebrate one day. We'll probably celebrate the whole month. I've been really busy this weekend with my, we have a lion team that goes to every business and wish, well, you know, well for the businesses. So we go, so on Saturday, we did sixteen businesses, so it was all over Fresno, and Sunday, we did the same. And it, you know, we just, basically, the lion team comes in, and this brings good luck to the businesses. So we did like supermarkets, restaurants, nail salon. So anybody that wants us to come and say, hey, good luck to your business, of course. So Cho's will have our lion team coming. It'll be in February eighteenth at seven PM. So you guys want to see a little show that you guys are all welcome to that, so I think one more advertising. I, I am going to advertise some. February twelfth, Portuguese Hall is doing a fundraiser, and they're trying to raise some money to fix, I think the water heater is going out or something. They're doing a dinner for four, spaghetti dinner for four, forty dollars. You get your spaghetti, your bread, your salad, and a bottle of wine, and it's just pickup only, is, I think you pick up between four to six. Try to pick up, you know, help them out, Portuguese Hall, okay? All right. I'm done with my advertising. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I attended the Blossom Trail when it was here in Salma, and one of them when it was in Fowler the last time, and it's, it's a great day, and it's a great event. Wish we had more water, and it would take a little longer for the blossoms to come out, but, you know, they are, they are beautiful. Hopefully, we'll get that, get that rain. Thank you to the city staff for everything, PD, fire, everybody who does such a great job making our city actually work. Welcome again, Rob. Really an honor to have you here, looking forward to working with you and seeing your talents in our city bloom. Speaking of blossoms, and I also wanted to say thank you to Post Twelve and Alicia Zaniga for that twenty-five hundred dollars for the new monkey bars for Berry Park. I had a long discussion with Senator Hurtado, and we really did get a lot of issues cleared up, which was great, and she did mention that our city can make Prop sixty-eight park requests online. We can actually go on their website and request it. We don't always have to go through their, you know, the legislative aid process with them. We can go directly on there, and she'll get that and, and lobby for us. I was there at the Christian Cafe. It was heartwarming to serve the folks' dinner. And in honor of my late brother-in-law and father-in-law, their, their February birthdays, you know, we bought the food and, and our niece made the food. She's a great cook. And we had meatloaf and, and mashed potatoes for everybody. It was a nice change of pace, like the Chinese food that the Lions serve. Really nice, just, just, just a nice evening. I chaired the Subcommittee for Calvans, the HR Subcommittee, and we conducted a review of the executive director. We'll be going over that review at Thursday's meeting. I had the Council of Governments meeting, and there were a couple of, of issues that we went over. One of them was the six-cycle housing element update, which is, you know, really important, as, as most people are aware, we got dinged from a two thousand and six housing element. The regional housing needs allotment numbers were not up to par and not completed, and the governor came in and threatened to sue our city as, as a result, so this is, this is no joke. We can, and we had some funding under, I think, SB two withheld from the city as a result of that. So we really need to be on the housing element that I believe comes up here, when is it? Next year, next year. And so what this is, is the ability of the cities to band together. This is cog at its finest, right? Council of Governments, all the cities getting together, pooling their resources and hiring a consultant to do, do the housing element. It's going to be a hundred and twenty thousand bucks. I mean, this consultant makes like two million dollars. It's, it's a big deal to get this housing element together for the cities in Fresno County. And if we don't band together, going on our own, it's estimated the cost would be two hundred and thirty thousand. So, you know, we're going to save a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars of taxpayer money, which is a, is a good thing for a professional product. Clovis has already bowed out. They're going, they're going to go on their own, so you, proportionally, it's going to go up a little bit from the hundred and twenty thousand. The other, the other item that came up, two items came up at cog, the Measure C, the TOD funding, the deadline for that is February twenty-eighth, and we've received funding for that two of the last three years. So that's been good. I know Reedley had received funding due to great, you know, grant writers and people for, for going for the funds. So hopefully this year, we can get something on that. I know the city manager is working on that. From the other cities, Orange Cove reported that they will no longer have to rely on groundwater. They're actually, they got a eight-million-dollar grant from the federal government to drill a water well. So, you know, they're going to actually have water, which is very nice for them after a long time of reliance on groundwater. Mayor Ramsey from Colinga said they're actually going to buy forty scooters. They're going to put them around the city, and people are going to be able to take scooters around the city, so that's interesting. He's, he's very enthused about that, so you know, he'll report back, and we'll see him. Maybe that's something good for the city to, to look at in the future. I want to thank Cal Water. This week, we had, weekend, we had an issue with a water main bursting, and they were, you know, Johnny on the spot, and they, they fixed it. There were some boil water orders for some folks in our, in our city. But they took care of it, and it was downtime for a couple of days, Stuart, just over the weekend, and that boil water order was lifted. But the good thing was, you know, they, they didn't just send an email out, they went door-to-door, you know, and let, and let the homeowners and the renters know that this issue was, was ongoing, and really appreciate that, that, that service and that extra mile that they went. Okay, and with that, last issue, there's some graffiti on the wall at Pro PT Physical Therapy on Dockery, actually on Country Club, and it's been there for a while. And I don't know what it's, I don't know if it's gang-related or what, but it's, it's just been there for a while, and I know it's private property, but Shane, maybe if you drive by it tomorrow, you'll see it. It's, it's, it's been there a few weeks. And with that, we will move on to our last oral communications of the evening. Is there anyone who would like to come up and address the council? Anyone who's been patiently waiting the whole council meeting?
Good evening, Mayor and all city council. I'm here to address the issue on waste management. The reason I'm bringing this up is because I-
Can you just identify yourself?
Oh, I forgot to say, my name is Mercedes Samora. Sorry. And the reason I'm here, I'm addressing waste management, because I got a, first I got pictures taken that what we put in our trash was overfilled or whatever. Okay, the thing, issue was that they took pictures, and I called them, and I says, you're going to charge me again for three inches of box that I did the last time. I'm not going to do it again this time. So I told them, those pictures that you took of my mail or trash was not mine. And he says, what do you mean? I go, first of all, the, the pictures you took, which I have here, was nice buildings with nice doors and even have rails, those yellow, I don't know what they call them, rails around the, so that somebody doesn't hit your building. Well, I says, that, that building, my door is green. What you showed me is white box, white doors. And I says, excuse me, this is not, this is not Salma. And they said, well, the guy that took the pictures, he took the wrong, he gave the wrong address, and I says, no, you, you didn't, you, you just didn't take the wrong address. It's the wrong state, because I was calling to Arizona with that young man, and it was from Arizona that were telling me that. And when I found out, when I was looking at that, because they were going to charge me, I says, you're not going to charge me. And they said, okay, we're going to, we see that, it's not yours. I ran into the, our bill for the month, because the businesses get bills, their houses, the, it goes to the, you know, through the, yes, uh-huh, and I found out that they were charging or have been charging, the businesses and Cho's pay attention that they are charging us for organic waste. And they've been doing this, I thought it was just January and February. Well, it went all the way back to March of twenty-twenty-one. And, and they told me that they were charging us that, but the law did come in, in California, but it's up in the west, it's up on the northern side of of the, what is it, the, the state. And before we get charged- And before we get charged their organic deal, we have to get a letter for stating that we are gonna go to organic. And we have to have the trash bins for that. Okay, so uh, I need to, the city, you, you guys brought in waste, western management. And they're not doing their job, I think it was outrageous to do that to us, or, and heaven knows how many businesses are being.
Thank, thanks very much. Thank you, Mercedes, appreciate it. Anyone else have any oral communications this time?
Hi, Teresa Solis, um, I'm representing the Kiwanis Club of Greater Salma. For the last fifty-plus years, we have sponsored the um, annual Kiwanis Classic Baseball Tournament during Easter week. At the high school, for the last two years, we were not able to have our tournament and so this year we are going to be able to. And we're asking for um, tournament sponsors, a home run sponsor is a hundred dollars, third base is seventy-five. Second base is fifty and first base sponsor is twenty-five dollars. The money that we um, raise and we also charged the gate entrance to the tournament. All that money is used to pay for the um, umpires for all of the turn, for throughout the, all the games. We play at Selma High and we play at Emmanuel also, so there are several games throughout the week. Um, and then we also pay for t-shirts for the winning team, so if anybody is interested in buying a sponsorship, please let me know, thank you.
Do we have anybody on Zoom? A phone? What else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Or adjourn?